I hadn't called or ordered this meeting of the August sixth, twenty twenty City National Planning Board. Linda, can you go ahead and call the roll, please?
Sure. Mike Peterson. Scott Leclerc. Adam Barley.
Here.
Ed Weber.
Yeah.
David Tenza.
Here.
Dan Schmidt. Dan Hudson.
Here.
Maggie Harper.
Here.
Bob Ballinger. Larry Hirsch.
Here.
And we have a quorum.
And I think, um, uh, Mike is with us, too. I think he might have jumped in right when you were calling him.
Mike Peterson. I see him.
Hey, Mike, can you hear us? You're on mute right now. There you go.
Mike, can you hear us?
Yeah, I'm not sure he can hear us. Well, he is present. We know that.
All right.
Yeah, we have a quorum. Okay, um, so next up in, in front of our, or in the Planning Board folks for your, in your packets, we have the minutes from the July ninth, twenty twenty, um, Planning Board meeting. Has anybody had a chance to take a look at those and want to make a motion as to whether or not they can be accepted as printed? Or do we need any amendments?
I'll move to accept them.
We have a motion by Mr. Hirsch to accept as written. If we have a second for that?
Second.
Second by Ms. Harper. Uh, any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, can I get a roll vote on that, please?
Scott Leclerc.
Yes.
Adam Barley.
Abstained.
Ed Weber.
Yes.
David Tenza.
Abstained.
Dan Hudson.
Yes.
Maggie Harper.
Yes.
Bob, Larry Hirsch.
Yes.
And Mike Pedersen.
Yeah, I don't think Mike can hear us. Maybe shoot him a message to go in and out again. It's that message or something?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and do that. Okay, that motion passes.
Okay, well, let's, let's continue to move on, uh, communications.
Okay, so earlier today, Chris had mailed out the following items. Um, there was an email from, um, Joe Mandola dated July thirtieth with updated engineering comments for case number seven, one eleven, one thirteen Lock Street.
Okay.
Um, you got a updated waiver request letter, um, for case number eight.
Can you go through the numbers? So I actually dialed the telephone, the regular thing.
I'm sorry.
Linda, can you go ahead and mute other people?
I'm gonna go ahead and mute everybody.
Go ahead.
All right. So you got a updated waiver request letter for case number eight on forty-one Central Street. And we had, um, updated engineering comments regarding, um, forty-one Central Street dated, uh, August fifth from Joe Mandola.
Yeah.
He got an email from, um, uh, Wayne Husband regarding, um, forty-one Central Street.
Yeah.
And then he got an email from Inabutter, um, in regards to the project at forty-one Central Street, and that's it.
Okay, thanks. Um, report of Chairman, Committee and Liaison. Ed, you have anything?
Yes. Uh, we had eight Franklin Street, which, uh, wanted to put out outside exhaust, um, um, for their kitchen and paint it black. I asked them to make sure that it be treated and if they're going to, uh, use that, um, uh, heat-treated paint. And it passed and it was accepted. That's it.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and, um, read the introductory statement of procedures here before we move on. Um, so, welcome, everybody. I'm Scott Leclerc. I'm the Chair of the City National Planning Board, and this is the, uh, July ninth, twenty twenty Planning Board meeting. Um, as the Chair of the Board, I find that due to the state emergency declared by Governor Sununu as a result of the COVID nineteen pandemic, and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number Twelve, pursuant to Executive Order twenty twenty dash zero four, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note, there's no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which is authorized to meet electronically pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I am confirming that we are, number one, providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. Specifically, we are video conferencing using WebEx through the city's IT department for this electronic meeting. Public access to this meeting is also provided via WebEx, and a link to the meeting is contained in the meeting agenda, available at the city's website. The meeting can also be streamed through the city's website at www.nashuanh.gov front slash three one eight, run slash CTV on Nashua's community link. The public may also view this meeting on Comcast Channel sixteen. Uh, number two, we're providing public notices and necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave, uh, notice to the public of necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings and where applicable, notice to a butters. Instructions have also been provided on the City of Nashua's website and publicly noticed at City Hall. Additionally, a link to the public WebEx access to this meeting is contained in the meeting agenda, available again on the city's website, www.nashuanh.gov. Number three, we are providing a mechanism for public to alert the public body in the meeting if there are problems with access. Anyone does have a problem accessing the meeting, please call six zero three five eight nine three one one five, and someone there will help you connect. Number four, adjourn the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access this meeting via the methods I mentioned, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. I'm in control of the meeting and to the extent practical and advisable, the board is gonna follow the procedures as identified in its bylaws. Um, first, the applicant will present their case, followed by questions of the board by the board, where they allow for a rebuttal period as best as possible for persons wishing to speak in favor, opposition, or have questions about the plan, before the board will then deliberate and determine an outcome. Applicants, their representatives, and individuals required to appear before the board are cleared for a vote, and they are not required to be physically present. Applicants, their representatives, and individuals required to appear before the board may contact the Planning Department to arrange an alternative means of real-time participation if they are unable to use WebEx. Real-time public comments can be addressed via video to the board using WebEx virtual meeting software for remote access. Please note that all votes taken in this meeting will be done by a roll call vote. That all Planning Board meetings will be held electronically until it's been deemed safe to conduct more typical meetings at City Hall. Planning Board, Planning Department, the city staff, thank everybody for their understanding and patience during this difficult time. Okay. So, reading down the agenda, old business conditional special use permits, there are none. Old business subdivision plans, there are none. Old business site plans, which is, uh, item number one, Oakwood Square LLC, heir of the Stabile Company's owner, the proposed site plan amendment to NR six six nine, construct a forty space parking lot, properties located at six through eight Pine Avenue. Um, this was tabled during our July ninth, twenty twenty meeting. So first up, if, uh, those of you at the, on the board, um, does anybody like to make a motion as to whether or not we want to remove this item from the table? Um, my, everybody, we do have new information in our packet that has, um, is intended to address some of our questions from the earlier, um, hearing on that. Anybody want to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Alderman Tenza.
I'd just like to make a motion to remove this, uh, from the table.
All right, so we have a motion by Alderman Tenza to remove, uh, old business site plan case number one from the table. Um, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson. Sounds like you got your audio back. That's good. Any further discussion from the board members? Uh, okay, can I get a roll vote on that, please, Linda?
Mike Peterson.
Yes.
Leclerc.
Yes.
Adam Barley.
Yes.
Ed Weber.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Dan Hudson.
Yes.
Maggie Harper.
Yes.
And Larry Hirsch.
Yes.
Okay, so that motion passes. Um, so do we have somebody here from the applicant that wants to, uh, sort of present the new information? Or I guess, do we, Adam, do we need to open, we need to, uh, open the hearing? I can't remember where we left it. Does anybody remember?
I, I'm not sure. I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I don't know if you.
Linda, do you remember? Were we still in the hearing when we tabled?
Yeah, we took jurisdiction and you were, um, closed the public hearing and you went into your meeting.
All right.
We're taking the motion, yeah.
Yeah, so, so I would need somebody to give me a motion to open the hearing.
I'll make a motion to open the hearing.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Barley to reopen the hearing. Um, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Tenza. Any further discussion? Can I get a roll vote on overturning the hearing for this?
Mike Pedersen.
Yes.
Scott Leclerc.
Yes.
Adam Barley.
Yes.
Ed Weber.
Yes.
Alderman Tenza.
Yes.
Dan Hudson. Maggie Harper. Larry Hirsch.
Yes.
And that motion passes.
Okay, so we now have the hearing open. Uh, now I'm ready to use somebody from the applicant that wants to present the new.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah, I can.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. For the record, my name is Ethan Beals. I'm a project manager over at Hayner Swanson doing business at three Congress Street in Nashville, New Hampshire. Um, a- as I think we had mentioned just a second ago, I, I had appeared before the board at the July ninth Planning Board meeting, seeking approval for a thirty-two space parking lot on map E lot one forty-five, which is located at six to eight High Pine Ave. Um, the, if you remember, I'm gonna share my screen now.
Yep, go ahead.
If, if you remember, the parking lot was situated in the, in the southern portion of the site below really this condo development which sits to the north. Um, and the intent of this parking lot was to provide some surplus parking for both Oakwood Square, which is this development, and the, and the abutting Pine Hill Gardens, which shares some ownership features between the two properties. Um, at the, at the July meeting, some board members expressed a number of comments to us, and ultimately, the case was tabled. Um, in response to the comments, in, in a letter that I had mailed to the, um, board dated July twenty-second, I'd like to, um, offer the following responses to your comments and the changes that we've made to the plans.
Okay.
The, the first is we added vertical granite curbing along the westerly and easterly edges of the property to, to act as a type of vertical car stop for the lot. Uh, there was some concern expressed about cars, um, driving outside the boundaries of the lot, so we felt that adding, um, vertical granite curb in these two areas would at least prevent some type of vertical stop for those. Uh, we also added a paved sidewalk connection to add that shared use connection um, for pedestrians to access the abutting Pine Hill Garden properties and vice versa for, for those, um, residents that want to come back to the lot. Um, additionally, we, we, we added a note down here asking the contractor to, to take measures to try to preserve some of the existing vegetation along Cypress Lane. Um, i- if you remember from the last meeting, site lighting on this, this portion of site really is a large challenge because we have this very large overhead electrical ever-source easement, um, which really prevents the, which really prevents us from putting any substantial, um, especially metallic light poles directly under the easement. But we have added, um, two light poles, one right along the entrance and one in this corner of the site. W- we envision these being, um, a shorter light pole with some type of LED light fixture on top of it that's dark sky compliant, um, and has full cutoff lumineers as is typical in Nashua. Um, a- and finally, I, I had provided, or we provided the city a draft, um, parking and access easement drafted by Attorney Morgan Hollis, um, to really detail the shared nature of the parking lot between Oakwood Square, which is th- that property, and then the abutting Pine Hill Gardens. Um, there, there are still a couple of, a little bit of minor coordination needed with engineering regarding the site lighting. Um, we think that this can be easily addressed going forward. So i- in summary, I think we've addressed the, the comments that the board raised at the last meeting and respectfully seek your approval for the project.
Okay, thanks. And, um, just to remind people, there was, there was a couple waivers and you, in the, in the original, just, um, there was one ninety dash two seventy-nine E, which was the existing conditions on the adjacent parcels.
Yep, so the.
That's the thousand-foot rule, kind of.
Yep. So there, there was two waivers, um, in, in a waiver letter that I had originally sent to the board. One was the, um, as you mentioned, the, um, existing conditions wrote the entire site in on abutting properties, and the second was for the maximum allowable, um, amount of spaces on this lot. As, as you remember, um, there's, there's twenty-nine units that sit on this lot and, and currently as it stands with, uh, I believe one point nine is the maximum, and so that would lead to about fifty-five parking spaces. Um, and, but really, the, the, the purpose of the, the new parking lot is to provide a, a shared use parking lot between Oakwood Square and the abutting Pine Hill Gardens properties, which, uh, which the owner has noticed, um, some high peak parking demand. So really, the intent is to try to keep any additional parking off of the public streets and on their own properties.
Okay, thanks. And then our packet had a stormwater report, but I'm just checking to see. It looks like it was revised on July twenty-second. And you?
Yep.
What was revised and what the, any changes were?
Yep, so it, it was really some, just a couple of minor changes. Um, we had slightly regraded each of the basins, um, to, to try to address some of the engineering comments at that time. So, so really, there were, there's no significant changes in terms of, um, the practices used or anything. It was just to a- adjust for the minor changes and to address some of the engineering comments at that time.
Okay. This, I guess, is a question for staff. So the, one of the stipulations had, um, the city's comments from May fifth, twenty twenty. That, that's still the latest of the comments?
Uh, no, um, the last. Yeah, you got updated comments at the last meeting and the date of July twenty-ninth.
July twenty-ninth, okay. Mr. Beal, you've reviewed all those comments and feel like you'll be able to comply with all those?
Yep, so, so as I had mentioned, the, um, Mr. Mandola at the city engineer's office had, um, two outstanding comments, both related to site lighting. Um, and, and we feel that we will be able to address this coordinate in a coordination effort with, um, the city engineering office.
Okay. All right, thank you. Um, questions from the board for the applicant? Go ahead and just, um, speak out. Actually, I can see all you now. Mr. Weber? You're on mute there, Ed. Can you unmute?
Okay. So with that understanding, uh, number four, uh, is no longer needed. Is that what you guys are saying?
Um, number four has changed to July twenty-ninth. I think.
Okay.
Still need to use that, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I got to July. I just thought at the end that he, and his comments were that they were all in agreement, so.
Yeah, no, I think there's still a couple of open ones, but.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions by the board for the applicant during the hearing? Hey, hearing none. Uh, at this point, I would ask, is there anybody, uh, listening in, um, from essentially the audience uh, that has any questions or would like to make a comment? If so, go ahead and unmute, and then I would need your name and address for the record, and then you can state your question.
Um, I'm Amy Mallett, and I live at ten High Pine Ave. Um, I'm abutting that where the parking lot will be.
Okay.
Um, I'm still concerned, um, with the spillway location, which is two-thirds of the length of my property. Um, I'm concerned about damage to the property with, you know, if we have like really heavy rains or heavy snows and it melts and the drainage is not, um, doesn't take care of it because it gets plugged. Um, I'm concerned with trash and debris from people walking through that area. We already have that as an issue, and it's just gonna be more with having heavier traffic going through there. I'm concerned with snow removal because it's not consistent. That was one thing that was brought up at the last meeting, and I didn't hear that as addressed.
Okay.
Um, also, the lighting, uh, I appreciate after the cool lights on the street side, but I'd like to see two lights put in on the other end of the parking lot as well because that is very dark.
Yeah, I, I think the applicant might have indicated there's a, there is an easement issue with the utility on that end of the lot.
Yeah, well.
The overhead power lines, but I'll let them explain that more if you'd like.
Um, I'm concerned that this project is also going to depreciate my home value as well as the values, um, in the neighborhood. Um, I'm concerned with security and who's gonna be monitoring, who's gonna be coming in and out of this parking lot. Um, and I had also mentioned at the last meeting that I would really like to see a higher structure being put between my property and, and that parking lot area if, if this takes place.
And, and remind me, uh, Ms. Mallett, there is a, there is a, um, fence there right now?
We've put in, we had put in a six-foot stockade fence, um, years ago.
And that's your fence on your property?
Yes, that's my fence.
Thanks.
Um, and my other issue is, um, the management office, um, for the properties has not been responsive to issues we've had in the past with either tenants or tenants parking on my lawn. Um, don't get calls back, and so if I have an issue with this parking lot or the drainage, who am I supposed to call to correct this problem?
Okay. All right.
Um, I, that's pretty much it for what I have for right now.
Okay, thanks. So we got that written down. We'll pass the applicant to readdress those, so. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition concern or have a question for the applicant? All right, hearing none. I will pass it back to, I guess I'll start with Mr. Beals. And I would like to see if you could address a little more specifically drainage, snow removal, and I'm sure you were taking notes here, Ms. Mallett, um, voiced some concerns, so.
Absolutely. So I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen again really quickly, um, to the site plan. So a- a- as, as you're familiar with the site.
Linda, can you mute everybody for a sec?
I'm gonna mute everybody.
Am I also?
You're good now, Mr. Beal.
Thank you. Um, the, in addition to, to the, the parking lot, we, we designed two smaller infiltration-style stormwater management areas um, as, as we have on many other projects in Nashua. Um, both are small infiltration basins with an infiltration trench, so really just a, a crushed zone trench at the bottom to help promote infiltration, and each also feature a, a leech and catch basin on each end to help, um, to help promote infiltration, especially during frozen ground conditions. Um, a- as you know, the, the city of Nashua has pretty clear, um, engineering stormwater standards, which require us to, to reduce the peak flows of stormwater leaving the site. And so, um, a- a- as you had mentioned, Mr. Chairman, earlier, we, we had submitted a revised stormwater management report, um, that, that kind of clearly details the, um, the strategies used as well as the, the clear reduction in peak flows that are leaving this area of the site, um, that we did in the formal stormwater study and that has also already received, um, the stormwater study at least had been reviewed by Nashua Engineering. In terms of lighting, as I had mentioned earlier, there, there is a large overhead easement. So while the, the electrical wires may not take up the full width of the lot, um, there is a, there's a formal one hundred-foot wide overhead easement, so it does take up the majority of that lot with the exception of kind of this southern portion of the site where we had called for the sighting of two light poles. The, the, um, snow plowing, we, we envision really kind of close plowing practices be used. Um, at, at this time, the, the owner of Oakwood Square will be responsible for the snow management on the site. Um, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions you have, Mr. Chairman, at this point.
Um, can you explain that, that, um, that left edge condition there? So there's the, the neighbor's fence. Is there any fencing or structure on, on proposed site?
Sure, so that, there, there is not anything proposed. Um, let me zoom in for a minute. Um, like I had mentioned, this is the, the stormwater management area that we have on the site with a formal infiltration trench and leech and catch basin at the bottom. Um, we have three parking spaces up on the, up to the northern edge of that piece of the property, um, as well as this is where actually the, one of the large overhead poles comes down for the electrical wires. Um, so we put a little paved ac- a little paved access with a couple of bollards to help protect that pole. Um, a- as Ms. Mallett had, uh, mentioned, there is a six-foot existing, I believe it's a wood stockade fence which runs the entirety of this property line um, that is not, not on our side of the property. And I think that's, that's basically that details that edge of the property, if you will. We did, like I mentioned earlier, we did add that vertical granite curbing here to act as a, as a vertical car stop, if you will, um, for these three spaces to prevent them from, um, driving too far and accidentally hitting the fence.
Okay. How far is it from the granite curb to the fence, roughly?
Um, I can, if you give me one second, I can take a quick measurement, but I, I think, sorry about that. So I think the, i- i- it's between nine and ten feet from the, the edge of the fence to the, um, vertical granite curb. So I think the, it, it's between nine and ten feet from the, the edge of the fence to the vertical granite curb.
So I've got other questions of the applicant by the board follow up? Mr. Weber?
Yes, one of the, one of the things that she brought up was trash. And if that you could provide a trash container that can be picked up whenever trash gets in there. I think that's what she's looking for. People leaving trash in the parking lot. I think she, she did mention that. And the other thing that she was talking about, you didn't address was who can she contact? If she has problems, she has, she has contacted the owner before and with no response. So can you address that?
Yeah, sure. So the, and, and I believe if, if to kind of test your memory, in, in the last board meeting, it had, I think even Ms. Mallett had brought up the fact that that area is kind of used as currently as, as almost like a little stockpile area. So if you were to drive by the site today, I do think that it's not the cleanest area around. But I do think that a, a kind of a formal parking lot might help actually not clean the appearance, but it'll help at least the, some of the stockpile and stuff will, will remove, will be removed out of this area for the construction. I, I can, I absolutely think that a, a trash receptacle, receptacle could be added in this area to help encourage people to throw away trash. I, we, we represent the owner of Oakwood Square. I can certainly bring it up with the owner that, that she has called in the past. I have no prior knowledge of that because we simply represent the owner, but I will be happy to bring it up to him. And so I, I would recommend that further contacts still continue to be made to, to the Oakwood Square LLC through the Stabile Companies, and I'd be happy to bring that up with the applicant or with our client, excuse me.
Other questions of the applicant, Mr. Weber?
One more. One of the things that we've had when we've had neighbors that have a problem with the area is that we've asked the applicant to have the owner set up a meeting with the neighborhood, meaning in neighbors that are affected and, and kind of go over stuff and as a good neighbor type of thing. And if you could encourage them to, the owner to come and, and ask to have a meeting with the neighbor, I think that would be a good faith kind of thing. Thank you.
I, I can absolutely bring up this exact discussion that we had with, with our client.
Other questions for the applicant on the board? All right. At this point, I'm seeing no further questions from the board. Any questions for staff? Not hearing any at this point.
Can I ask a question? It's Amy Mallett.
Oh, yeah, you have one more chance to, on the same topics. Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so with the snow plowing, where is the plan to put the snow when they, when they plow? Because I want to make sure it's not being put up against my fence. That's, that's a concern.
Sure. Thanks. Any other questions? Because that's kind of like the last opportunity.
No, but I, I would just like to say that I would appreciate, I liked Mr. Weber's idea of a meeting being set up. I would appreciate that.
All right. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Beal, could you want to address the snow pile thing one more time?
Yeah, so a, as I had mentioned earlier, it's really a smaller parking lot so that there's not going to be hopefully at least tremendous amounts of snow being generated. And it will be close plowing techniques, so each, each kind of side of the parking lot will likely be plowed to the corresponding side. That being said, there, there is on Ms. Mallett's side of the parking lot, there is that a ten foot buffer between the, the vertical granite curb and her fence. And then as you travel further south, there is a larger buffer due to the, the stormwater management area. So it's our opinion that there is, there is room for this lot to be plowed without pushing the snow up into Ms. Mallett's fence.
Mr. Beal, could you bring the, the plan back up on screen? Where those three spots are that face her fence? Is it feasible to put sort of a little, you know, sort of like a wood kind of post and beam kind of fence across there so that the plow can't go that way? Because I think it's, it could be somewhat somewhat like enticing to plow up into that corner. You know, I can see that. You know what I mean? Right across with the front of those parking spots so that the plow can't go over the edge of the curb.
Yep. So I, I would envision that this corner actually wouldn't get plowed to this narrow spot here. We have a lot of room just to the south as well as even in this, this kind of corner island, if you will. Reason that I, I, I think that, as you know, the, the vertical granite curb kind of even, even farther than providing a vertical stop for cars, it definitely provides the same stop for plows. So I would really envision this area being plowed out to some of the non-curved edges of the site as opposed to up, as opposed to a contractor working the snow up and over the curb along this small its property, especially in such an area right here where there's really not that much room. I would really see the contractor plowing more to the open area to the south or to the north of these three spaces.
Do you have any suggestion to make it so it's not possible, other than I guess we can put a stipulation on it that says it's not allowed, you know?
Yeah, I mean, to, to me, that, 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 that could be handled more operationally. So a, a discussion with, with the owner and, and the maintenance team to really try to avoid operationally plowing snow to that, that little narrow strip of grass.
Okay, I'll bring, we'll bring it up on the board and see which way they want to go with that. Okay. Okay, any other questions from the board while we're in the, the hearing? Not hearing any, we're seeing any, so I'm going to go ahead and move to the meeting. All right, so we've got this new business, case number one. We've seen it a couple of times now. They've certainly, in my opinion, addressed several of our concerns before, particularly with regard to the shared use. Mr. Hudson, I know you had some concerns earlier about the access. Have those been cleared out for you or?
Yes, I believe they have addressed them. They provided the walkway connection to the abutting parcel, which was one of the things. And yeah, I believe, I believe they've, as, as suggested, it pretty much addressed all the engineering issues that we had raised.
I know Mr. Weber brought up a trash receptacle. I think that's probably, you know, maintaining that's a good idea. Yeah, that would need to be a stipulation, I think, if we're, somebody wants that. How do people feel about the plowing? Does anybody think there needs to be more?
I'm a little concerned about that. She has a, if there's a fence or a wood stockade fence, which will be pretty badly trashed if it, if they have a heavy snow winter, I would think. Could you be some sort of stipulation requiring the applicant to install some sort of fence there? His own fence, which he'd have to maintain?
Yeah, I think that's what I was kind of going at. I mean, you can do the kind that's like sort of like a guard rail, if you will, you know, right? At the end of those spaces. Oh, Mr. Hudson, do you have any ideas on that? What might be?
Yeah, I, I'd agree. I'd say, you know, a wood, some, some sort of a wood guard rail. It doesn't have to be super crash worthy, but just to prohibit it piling up with snow in that area.
Yeah, I think I'm kind of a fan of that myself.
That would be the edge of the, the edge of the pavement, basically?
Yeah, essentially, essentially right off the, the pavement and, and front of those three parking spaces, you know? On the, I don't know if that's the plan. What is that directionally? West, yeah, Plan West. So, so that would have to be a stipulation if somebody wants that. Okay, any other comments during the meeting here, Mr. Barley?
Yeah, I would just, I, I mean, I, I think, I think it's, what you guys are discussing is reasonable in terms of having some sort of fencing there. I would just suggest that to the extent the maker of the motion is adding that type of stipulation, just to be, to be flexible in terms of, you know, allowing the applicant, you know, to choose among reasonable options there.
Okay, makes sense. I mean, they'd have to get it approved through. Maybe just have them work with city engineering on whatever the final solution is.
Right, yeah, something like that.
Mr. Chair?
Yep, go ahead.
I, I mean, I would say even just some bollards would suffice any type of barrier to, you know, to prevent a, a plow driver from wanting to push snow there, because otherwise it, it looks like they're probably going to have to drop their plow and, and actually pull snow out of those three spaces.
Great. Yeah, I think, I think something to protect that is a good idea as well. I like Mr. Barley's approach would leave it, leave it a little bit flexible with the, knowing the intent, and then engineering can review it. Anybody else? Anything? Somebody want to make a motion? I remind everybody to the date of the engineering review comments is July twenty ninth now, not the fifth of May. Looking for a motion from somebody here. Mr. Weber, I see a hand up. Get unmute though, too. Don't forget.
Okay. Those new business number one site plan, six eight High, High Pine Ave. Seeing the plan meets NRO one forty six D. First waiver, one ninety, two seventy nine EE, which requires one to show existing conditions on the side of adjacent partial is granted. Finding the waiver will not be contrary spirit and ten of the regulation. The second waiver reading the request for waiver NRO one ninety, one ninety eight, which requires maximum number of parking spaces granted. Finding the waiver will not be contrary in spirit and ten of the regulations. Number three, as read. And number four, just changing the date to July ninth, twenty twenty. Number five, the applicant will maintain a trash receptacle in the parking lot. Number six, the applicant will work with engineering to prevent snow to be pushed against the abutter's fence.
Okay, and I just would ask maybe if you mind, I think that the date of the comments is the twenty ninth. Is that correct?
Yes, twenty ninth, thank you. Not July ninth. That was before. So twenty ninth, twenty twenty.
And I think, you know, if you could be more specific about what you want to see at the, you know, as a block for the plowing?
Well, that's where I wanted, I'm not sure what would be applicable. It's more of what engineering would see feasible that would work. And, and I'm working with engineering on what would be applicable and work.
Yeah, but maybe Ed, though, if you could just, you know, specify where on the plan we're talking about and suggest that the applicant would work with.
Okay, yeah, okay. And that would be on the northwest abutter on a map E lot one, one thousand one hundred sixteen.
Okay, thanks. So we have that motion with those stipulations, six of them, as Mr. Weber has presented. We have a second on the Mr. Barley. Any further discussion? Can I get a roll vote on that?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott LeClaire?
Yes.
Barley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Alder Mantenza?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on. New business conditional special use permits, there are none. New business subdivision plans. Case number two, public service company in New Hampshire and city of Nashua owners. Application and acceptance of proposed one year extension of lot line relocation plan. Property is located at three and twenty one Pine Street. And I'm going to also hear this subdivision plan case with the associated site plan, which is case number three, same owner and an application and the acceptance of a rose one year extension of site plan to show relocation of EverSource Energy Mill Yard Substation, again located at three and twenty one Pine Street. So with regard to case number two, the subdivision plan, can I have a motion as to whether that case is ready for jurisdiction?
So moved.
There are a motion to take jurisdiction on case number two by Mr. Weber. Do you have a second on it?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson, was it? Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. Can I get a roll vote on jurisdiction for number two?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott LeClaire?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yeah.
Ed Weber?
Ed, you there?
Ed?
Yes. Did you hear me?
Yes. Alder Mantenza?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero.
Okay, now regarding new business site plan, case number three, there are a motion to take jurisdiction on that.
Weber, yes.
We have a motion by Mr. Weber to take jurisdiction, case number three. Second, anybody?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion on that? I'll get a roll vote on that, please.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott LeClaire?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that passes eight to zero.
Okay, so we have jurisdiction of new business two subdivision and new business three site plan. If someone from the applicant, you can go ahead and present them both together.
All right, very good. Let me introduce myself first. My name is Nick Golan. I'm a licensed engineer and senior project manager with TF Moran here on behalf of the EverSource Mill Yard team. Relative to the requests that are before you, we're requesting a one year extension of both the lot line adjustment plan and the site plan approval. This project is the proposed land swap between the city of Nashua and EverSource, the relocation of the Mill Yard Substation. The areas that are being transferred are essentially exact. The reason for the request is it has taken a little bit longer than we expected for obtaining the necessary easements that go along with the relocation of the substation. But we do have the expectation that the year extension should provide adequate time to achieve those. I'll keep it short. That is our request.
Okay, any questions from the board of the applicant? Okay, I'm seeing none at this time. Seeing none from the board, I will ask, is anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition concern of a question of the applicant? If you do, go ahead and unmute. They can name an address for the record, please. Hey, I'm hearing none there as well. At this point, I give the board one last chance to ask any questions of the applicant or staff during the hearing. Being none, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing for these two items and go into the meeting. So pretty straightforward extensions. Mr. Golan indicated, you know, just taking longer for the easement works. It seems reasonable. I think we approved this not too long ago, in July of two thousand nineteen. So I'm in favor of it. Is? So I'm in favor of it. Does anybody else have any questions or comments they want to make during the uh meeting here? All right, not seeing any. I'd be willing to take a motion. And please start with new business number two. Mr. Barley?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Um I would make a motion to uh approve one-year extension request for new business number two um subdivision plan um with the service of New Hampshire and City of Nashua at three and twenty-one Pine Street extension.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Barley regarding new business number two to uh approve that extension. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
I didn't see who that was. Who was it?
Uh Dave Tenzel.
Okay, Mr. Alder Mantenza, got a second. Any further discussion? Can we get a roll vote on that?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Alder Mantenza?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Okay, so that motion passes um regarding new business number three. Do we have a motion maker on that? Mr. Barley?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Um again, I'll make a motion to approve new business number three uh site plan uh with respect to the applicant's request for a one-year extension um in this for the site and relocation of the substation, Public Service Company, New Hampshire and City of Nashua at three and twenty-one times extension.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve uh new business case number three um by Mr. Barley. Do we have a second on that?
Second, I can have Dave Tenzel.
All right, Alder Mantenza, a second. Do we have a um any discussion on that? All right, I'm not seeing any. Linda, can you go ahead and mute through everybody and then we'll just do the roll? Thanks.
Okay, Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Alder Mantenza?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, folks. Have a good night.
All right, moving on. Um new business site plans, case number four. ZJ BV Properties LLC owner. Application and acceptance of proposed one-year extension of two eighty-four unit apartment buildings with associated site improvements. This property is located at one fifty-nine Temple Street. So I first asked the board, is anybody want to make a motion uh regarding whether to take jurisdiction of this new business case number four?
So moved.
So a motion to take jurisdiction by Mr. Peterson. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Can we get a roll vote on the jurisdiction?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Alder Mantenza?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero.
Okay, thanks. So do we have someone from the applicant that wants to uh speak to this uh request for extension?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Uh my name is Aaron Mackey. Um I'm a civil engineer with Allen and Major Associates. Uh we are representing the applicant for this project and as well as number five. Um East Hollis Street project as well. Um the applicant is requesting a twelve-month extension for the site plan approval granted on August eighth twenty nineteen for the multifamily projects at one fifty-nine Temple and one ten Hollis, uh which was number five as well. Um the plans were were approved and signed on August eighth uh twenty nineteen. A quick summary of the project number four, one fifty-nine Temple Street.
Just real quick, Mr. Mackey, make sure you just keep the number four for this one, because five's not actually open right now, so.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, we do. We have to keep them separate because there weren't um, they're not the same site, so.
Okay, understood. So just speaking to number four, um it's located at one fifty-nine Temple Street. Uh the owner applicant is ZG ZJ BV Properties LLC. Uh a quick summary of the project, uh multifamily development located approximately four acres of land. Uh it's located at one fifty-nine Temple Street. A proposed development consists of the construction of two connected multifamily buildings and associated parking. The buildings will total one hundred and sixty-eight dwelling units and two hundred and fifty-two parking spaces. Uh building two is proposed at ground floor parking and building one is proposed to have amenity space within the ground floor. So that's just a quick summary of the project um that was approved in August eighth of twenty nineteen. Um the request is being submitted because the owner and the architect are currently working through a modified interior architectural program of adjustments due to the COVID nineteen. Um and also the owner is waiting for clarity on the COVID nineteen situation before moving this large-scale project into construction. The approved plans, this the site plans will not change. It's just it's just a building where they're trying to sort out the building situation um currently. And with that, that's that's just a quick summary of one fifty-nine, number four.
Okay, can you confirm that the elevations and and the the architectural elevations as well that were presented with the original site plan? There's no intent to change any of those either?
No, no, no intent to change the elevations or the site plan. It would be more just interior modifications and uh just how to address the current situation.
Okay, and you're still accepting of the original stipulations that were put on the original approval?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thanks. Anybody from the board have any questions uh for the applicant regarding, starting with uh item number four, the extension request? Mr. Hudson?
I'm not sure if this is a question for the applicant or for staff, but in city GIS, it shows what was formerly an easement, I think, an access easement. Now it shows as a separate lot. So I was just curious. I guess the site plan needs to be amended to show that. That was along the west side of the parcel.
Right, they also did a um a lot line um a relocation as part of it uh when they came through after with the butter. And I think that they did send in an amended one. This is probably an old plan when they
Okay, yeah, I just know. I mean, I just noticed they said no changes to the plan. So if this, if the plan's been amended, amended, it's different than this, then that's fine. I just
Yeah.
was confused by that. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so Linda, that's administratively, you're able to deal with that.
Yeah, this was the uh, yeah, we have that already.
Okay. Other questions for the applicant um case number four? Uh at this time, I'd open up uh to anybody in the audience listening in. If you have a question, a concern or comment regarding item number four, please go ahead and unmute and um take your name and address for the record. Okay, hearing none. Um I'll give the board one last chance. Any further questions in the hearing? I see none. Uh go ahead and close the hearing on item number four. Um move into the meeting. Um seems like a pretty reasonable extension. Usually one year is is a pretty typical, particularly in today's somewhat questionable uh financial environment. I I kind of get that, so I'm in favor of letting this move another year. I don't know if anybody has any other questions or comments they want to make during the meeting from the board? Okay, seeing none. Anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Weber?
Yes, I'll make a motion. Uh new business number four site plan, one fifty-nine Temple Street. Um a one-year extension with all prior conditions of approval incorporated herein made part of this plan unless otherwise determined by the planning board.
Okay, we didn't otherwise determine anything, so so we should be good. Um anybody want to make a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? Mr. Barley?
Mr. Chair, I just, I I I know it was Mr. Weber's intent, but I just want to confirm this is a motion to approve.
Yes, it is.
Okay, thanks.
Got it.
Thank you.
Okay, hearing no more discussion. Uh can I get a roll vote on that, Linda?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Alder Mantenza?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that passes eight to zero.
Okay, great. And then I'm gonna go ahead and move right on to uh new business case number five. East Hollis ac- East Hollis Street Acquisitions LLC owner. This is a application and acceptance again of a proposed one-year extension. A proposed eighty-unit multifamily development with associated site improvements. This is located at one ten East Hollis Street. Um can we go ahead and get a motion to uh is the whether to take jurisdiction on item number five?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Barley, a second. Mr. Peterson?
Second.
Okay, so we have a second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion by the board? Uh can we get a quick roll vote on taking jurisdiction on number five?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Alder Mantenza?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero.
Okay, great. So uh Mr. Mackey, did you want to add some more things on uh one ten East Hollis? Go ahead, yeah.
Sure, I'll just uh run through a similar spiel. A a quick summary of this project is um the owner of this one is East Hollis Street Acquisitions LLC located at one ten East Hollis Street. Um this was a multifamily development located at one ten East Hollis Street, a one-point-four acre parcel. Uh the approved development consists of an adaptive reuse of the existing building into approximately eighty residential units including amenity spaces. The uh project will provide approximately sixty-eight parking spaces with some situated across the building and the remainder located uh on an overflow parcel located on Temple Street. That was the approved project. Same approval date was August eighth twenty nineteen and the same request as the last. Um the owner applicant is re respectfully requesting a twelve-month um extension of the site plan approval granted on August eighth um for the same reasons, same same developer, same owner, um currently working through a modified interior development program um due to COVID nineteen. Um the elevations proposed and the site plan proposed is to remain unchanged. Um the owner is just currently uh waiting for clarity on how to deal with the COVID situation and the proposed development. Uh that's that's uh my summary for number five.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Uh anybody from the board have any questions for the applicant regarding uh new business site plan, item number five? Yeah, not seeing any from the board. I would uh open it up to the audience. Is there anybody listening in that has any comments, questions regarding item number five? And if you do, please unmute and the name and address for the record. I'm not hearing any. So at this point, I give the board any last chance for any questions of the applicant or staff during the hearing. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the hearing and move to the meeting. So pretty straightforward, same situation as the last approval. Um anybody want to make a motion from the board? This is number five. Mr. Barley?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Um I would make a motion to approve um the request for a one-year extension with respect to new business number five, East Hollis Street Acquisitions LLC. Um construction of multifamily residential project at one ten East Hollis Street, um incorporating all prior uh conditions of approval.
Okay, so we have that motion to approve as stated by Mr. Barley. Do we have a second on it?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson. Uh any further discussion? Uh can we get a roll vote on that item, Linda?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Alder Mantenza?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night.
All right, moving on. Uh new business site plan, case number six. This is the Southland Corporation owner, seven eleven applicant. This is an application and acceptance of proposed amendment to NR one zero five seven to remove the existing fuel dispensers, concrete pad and gas canopy and install new dispensers, islands and canopy and pad. This property is located at three sixty-seven Amherst Street. Uh at this point, is there uh somebody from the board that would like to make a motion as to whether to take jurisdiction to this application?
Weber, so moved.
So a motion to take jurisdiction by Mr. Weber. Do we have a second on it?
Second.
Uh it's our second by Mr. Peterson. Um any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Can we get a roll vote on that?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Um Scott Leclair? You have to unmute yourselves. Sorry.
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Alder Mantenza?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero.
Okay, so do we have someone from the applicant that wants to present uh case number six?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Dylan Blackshire. I'm representing Seven Eleven Corporation. Uh I'm with Core States Group and for the record, my address is nine eight two zero Ash Creek Drive, Dallas, Texas, seven five two two eight. And Seven Eleven are looking at uh in replacing the tanks and dispensers and canopy for the site uh as a part of their maintenance for the site. Um basically, as they age, of course, need routinely made replaced. And since this is uh an older site along with that, Seven Eleven are working to uh make sure the site complies to NHDES requirements which are what brought about several of the changes on site. So the reason the canopy dimensions have changed and the grading of the site took place was to comply with uh the state of New Hampshire uh requirements, and that mainly has to do with spill containment. By and large, the sign is being replaced life to life, so it's two dispensers for two dispensers. And then the tanks, uh underground tanks on site are being replaced as well. And again, the changes to the site uh in terms of grading and dimensions and the canopy dimensions are all associated with spill uh containment requirements uh for NHDES. And we've been in contact with uh Mr. Mandola and administrative items that he has will will work to get those addressed. And then we've been also in contact with Seven Eleven Corporate. We're gonna have ongoing discussions with Mr. Mandola regarding more of the maintenance and improvements on site, and we'll work through those uh with Mr. Mandola as well. And again, uh if y'all have any other questions, I'm here to answer any questions, and thank y'all so much for the time.
Okay, thanks. Um can you describe for me just a little bit more detail the canopy construction? Um in particular, I guess, what I'm Um, in particular, I guess, what I'm kind of getting at, is, is there a, um, is there a parapet around the canopy such that any like extinguishing tanks and things like that are not visible from the road?
I've also got Shrog Country on the line. He's with our, our fueling team, and he can get into a little more of the details of that. Shrog, are you available? Do you mind just so that you've got the specifics on the canopy itself? I don't want to misspeak.
Yes, sir. I am here. Can you repeat the question? I apologize.
Yes, it's so with regard to the canopy around the dispensers, uh, in particular, that is there a parapet around the canopy that blocks any view of any, um, fire suppression canisters and piping and stuff like that? We've had some canopies put in that, you know, it's like the little bit of an eyesore on top of the canopy. So I mean, at the same time, maybe address, you know, will the, the sort of this suppression nozzles and stuff like that below the canopy be painted into the canopy, you know, white or whatever it is and capped versus sort of a little sea of pipes, you know, underneath?
I have not seen any fire suppression plans yet, but we can definitely suggest that to the client to make that, um, same color as the bottom of the canopy, so it's not an eyesore.
Okay. And can you, can you confirm that you'll have a least, uh, some sort of, um, parapet around the canopy that blocks any view from the roadway, you know, at least, um, the, uh, suppression tanks, or anything like that?
We, we can definitely do that. However, I do not believe that this site has fire suppressions, uh, proposed.
Okay.
So that's why I'll go back and check with the client and make sure if there will be any fire suppression, and then we'll make sure we have some kind of parapet to block the view. Yes.
Okay. Uh, that's the only question I have. Anybody from the board? Mr. Barley?
Yeah, I just had a, a question sort of on the procedural history here. I, we, this board had approved what I think is a, is a fairly similar, uh, plan for replacing the tanks back in two thousand and sixteen, but that approval lapsed. I'm wondering if you could just speak to sort of, you know, what happened with that original plan and, and I know you mentioned some New Hampshire, um, uh, DOT changes, I think, or DES changes. It, is, is it related to that, or was there some other reason why the, the original plan wasn't implemented?
I appreciate the question, and I have to admit, I, I wasn't involved with the project, uh, at that timeframe. I'll, I'll defer again to Shrog. I don't know if Shrog will have answers on that specifically or not, but, uh, Shrog, do you know as to why it lapsed previously?
Unfortunately, I do not.
Okay, do you know then, is, is this, is this essentially this, the same? I, I know, again, you weren't involved specifically, but, but to the extent you know, is it essentially the same proposal as, as the one that was approved in two thousand and sixteen, apart from any, you know, changes to comply with regulatory standards?
Yes, sir, that's my understanding. Yes, that it's the same, but incorporates all the current NHDES requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and then can you just confirm you do have, um, one waiver request on here, which is related to one ninety dash two seventy-nine EE, which is, and it is showing existing conditions, um, of the abutting sites. Is your belief that, that, um, showing anymore on the plan is not of any value to the decision here?
And I'm sorry, let me, uh, let me again make sure I'm reading that correctly again.
Yeah, so one ninety dash two seventy-nine EE requires like an existing plan that shows a budding property and things like that up to a thousand feet. It's not atypical for us to see a request for a waiver on that when there's no real impacts to anything beyond that that are, or related to the site, so.
Right, I, I apologize. I was just making sure I was reading the same intent. Yes, we would be requesting a waiver on that. All this is specifically addressing onsite improvements and complying with NHDES requirements. So, uh, beyond the scope of that, no, we wouldn't impact any other property with, uh, with anything other than just, just the changes in that canopy convention, and that, that should almost be negligible. Really, it probably won't be noticeable.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Other questions of the applicant from the board? Anybody in the audience wishing to speak in opposition or concerned or have a question of the applicant? Uh, this would be your time to unmute, state your name and address for the record. Ask a question. Yeah, I'm not hearing any. So, uh, any further questions from the board? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the hearing and I move to the meeting. So, um, this is, looks pretty straightforward to me. Um, there were dispensers there before. Um, I don't know if anybody feels like they need a stipulation regarding any of the, um, construction of the canopy, but, um, I guess the only thing I, I'd say is, you know, I mean, I know they indicated that they would do it, but it might be good to record that at least there's a parapet around the canopy to conceal any equipment on top of the canopy if there is any. So that'd be my recommendation. But any other comments? Anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Barley?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve new business number six site planned, um, Southland Corporation, seven-eleven owner, Core States Group applicant. Um, finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in site plan on our, in our section one ninety dash one forty-six D. With the following stipulations. Stipulation one being a wave request with respect to one ninety dash two seventy-nine EE, um, with respect to, uh, showing existing conditions. That wave is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulations. Stipulations two through five as written in the staff report, and then I will add a new stipulation number six, to indicate that, um, the applicant will, uh, include a parapet, uh, on the canopy to, um, uh, to, uh, close off any, um, the view of any, uh, fire suppression system to the extent applicable here.
Okay, so we have that motion to approve with those six stipulations as indicated by Mr. Barley. Do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Weber? Is that right, Mr. Weber?
Yes, yes.
Any further discussion? Okay, can I get a roll vote on that?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
Yep, that passes eight to zero.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, I'm gonna move on to, uh, item number seven here. Um, so new business site plan, this is case number seven. Raymond W. Ennis, Senior Revocable Trust Owner, LaFavor Folio LLC applicant. This is an application and acceptance of a proposed site plan to show eighteen multi-family units and associated site improvements. This property is located at one-eleven through one-thirteen Lock Street. So, uh, is anybody from the board had a chance to take a look at this package and the application and want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction?
So moved.
You have a motion to take jurisdiction by Mr. Peterson? Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? All right, can we get a roll vote on taking jurisdiction?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Alderman Tenza?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero.
Okay, so we have jurisdiction. Um, we have somebody from the applicant that wants to present. Okay, go ahead.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chair. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, my name is Tom Zajak. I'm a civil engineer with Hayner Swanson here in Nashville. Here tonight with Justo LaFavor Ortiz, uh, who is, uh, a member of LaFavor Folio LLC. They are the applicant. Also with us here tonight is attorney Jerry Premier. He's a project attorney. We're here tonight, we're seeking your, uh, acceptance and approval of a site plan to redevelop the one-eleven, one-thirteen Lock Street property into eighteen, uh, residential units. Uh, so, Mr. Chair, if it's okay with you, I'd just like to provide a brief presentation, after which we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Yep, go ahead.
I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, share my screen here.
Okay.
Hope everybody can see that okay?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so the subject property is one-eleven, one-thirteen Lock Street, uh, which is map forty-one, lot fourteen. It's about a one-acre site located in the general industrial zone. Uh, the site is abutted by Lock Street and a, and single-family residences to the north, a single-family residence to the east, the Heritage Baptist Church to the west, and the Nashville River to the south. Uh, as you can see from the aerial photo, although we're in a, uh, general industrial zone, the neighborhood is nearly all residential. Existing on the site today is a multi-story, multi-tenant industrial building. It's a former Accurate printer building. The majority of the site is currently developed and exists as pavement and hard-packed gravel areas. The site is currently serviced by public sewer, water by Penetech Waterworks, overhead electric and telecommunications utilities, as well as underground gas. Uh, you can see on the aerial photo, there's existing vegetation and mature trees located around the perimeter of the site to the east and west, as well as along the riverbank to our south. The topography of the site is relatively flat before sloping steeply down to the river. Uh, the rear portion of the site is located within the seventy-five-foot prime wetland buffer from the Nashville River. Uh, this existing buffer area is mostly impervious, uh, and has all been previously disturbed. It is worth noting that our property line ends at the top of bank that's specifically called out in RD, so it's not, it's not the center of the river as, as you may typically see. Uh, it, it is worth mentioning, Mr. Chair, that the site is an active asbestos disposal site on record with the city and DES. Uh, we believe, uh, that area to be located in the rear portion of the site between the existing building and the riverbank, generally in this area here where my cursor is. Uh, that was capped and closed out in the nineties. The applicant, uh, is experiencing with working through the ADS regulations, uh, but we are not anticipating any impacts to that existing cap as part of this project. Uh, as expected, uh, with a, a, a site like this, there are no current stormwater management practices. Uh, the front portion of the site drains overland into Lock Street where it enters the city's combined sewer system. The rear portion of the site, again, drains overland, uh, down the steep slope and into the Nashville River. So I'm just gonna switch here to the proposed project. Okay. So as I mentioned, it's being proposed to redevelop this property by demolishing the existing building and constructing two new residential buildings totaling eighteen units. Uh, the proposed buildings will contain three-story townhouse-style units, each with a one-car garage and shared driveways. Access to the site will be provided via a new twenty-four-foot wide private driveway off of Lock Street to be known as Sapphire Lane. Uh, there is a life safety and, uh, life safety access and dumpster truck turnaround, uh, located in the rear of the site. Other site improvements include new curving and concrete sidewalk along Lock Street, uh, new landscaping, site lighting, fencing, utility services and stormwater management. Uh, these two new buildings will continue to be served, uh, served by public sewer, water by Penetech Waterworks, underground gas, electric and cell data utilities. I'll speak to, uh, a couple of the building design elements. Uh, so this is a similar style, uh, building than in unit to what was, uh, recently proposed just down the street. There's a five-unit, uh, development located at ninety-three Lock Street, uh, which was approved, uh, last year and is under construction. That is also owned and being developed by the same, uh, group, LaFavor Folio LLC. Uh, so there's a three-story townhouse-style unit, as I mentioned. The first floor is, is really just a garage and a building entrance with the living space on the second and third stories. Uh, these are all proposed to be two-bedroom units. It is a relatively, uh, modest or condensed footprint. It's about eighteen feet wide by thirty-two feet deep, uh, each unit. Uh, the exterior materials include vinyl siding and shakes. Yeah, there is a deck proposed, uh, for each of these units located in the rear and represented uh, on our site plan with the little box with the X. You can see a couple here. And both buildings will be fully sprinkled. Uh, the project's traffic engineer, Steve Purnow, prepared a traffic, uh, impact memo dated September ninth, twenty-nineteen. It evaluated the traffic impact, uh, for this project, uh, and he also prepared the TIR worksheet. Uh, as expected, the project will result in minimal impact and no further study was warranted. Uh, Mr. Purnow also evaluated scent distance in, in both directions, and those were found to be more than adequate for the new site driveway. Uh, I'd just like to talk about stormwater and the wetland buffer improvements, because uh, especially for a redevelopment site, we've got a very good story to tell there. Uh, for stormwater, as noted, the existing site is mostly developed with no formal treatment practices. A runoff drains either directly to the river or out to the combined sewer system in Lock Street. Uh, so this redevelopment project really provides a great opportunity to significantly improve things from a stormwater, uh, perspective compared to the existing site. Uh, the proposed project, uh, will maintain existing drainage patterns and will actually result in a reduction of about five thousand square feet of impervious area compared to the existing site. That's about fifteen percent. Uh, our open space is forty-one percent, where ten percent is the minimum required, uh, by code. A runoff from the site will be captured, uh, by curving and catch basins and roof drains, uh, in the front portion of the site, I should add, and directed into a subsurface stormwater management area, uh, known as stormwater management area A. It's located in this lawn area in the front of the site where my cursor is. Uh, this subsurface practice has been designed to fully store and infiltrate the one-hundred-year storm event. And the reason we did that is because, you know, we realized that the existing drainage drains into the combined sewer system, and, uh, we really want to, every opportunity to, to really minimize and eliminate, uh, stormwater runoff from entering those systems around the city. The second portion of the site, uh, the rear portion will drain into two smaller surface-type infiltration basins via overland flow. These systems are fully designed, uh, are, are designed to fully infiltrate the fifty-year storm event. Uh, due to these proposed practices and the reduction in impervious area that I mentioned, the project will result in a significant decrease in peak flows leaving the site, both to the combined sewer system in Lock Street and the Nashville River. With regards to the buffer, uh, as I mentioned, we do have a seventy-five-foot prime wetland buffer associated with the Nashville River. I'll point with my cursor to the line as it goes through the site. This existing buffer area on site is, is almost fully developed. As I mentioned, our property ends at the top of bank. So we're proposing to redevelop th- this entire buffer area, uh, which is roughly eighty-eight hundred square feet. Um, so we did go to the CONCOM for, uh, review on this project, and we highlighted really three design goals, how we could improve, uh, the buffer in the river. So the first is to keep the majority of the redevelopment, including the buildings outside of that seventy-five-foot buffer. So we've done that certainly with the buildings. We've got some stormwater management, and we have a emergency vehicle and dumpster turnaround located within that buffer, but we've really uh, met that goal, which is to keep the majority of the development on the north side of the property and outside the buffer. The second goal is to reduce the existing impervious cover, both for the overall site and specifically within the buffer. The second goal is to reduce the existing impervious cover, both for the overall site and specifically within the buffer, and also try to increase the green space directly adjacent to top of bank. If you've been out to the site even most recently, there are cars and vehicles and disturbance right up to that top of bank, and that was something we identified early and worked with CONCOM to come up with a plan there. So we are reducing the impervious area, as I mentioned, about fifteen percent on the overall site, but specific to the buffer area, we're reducing that impervious area as it exists today by about fifty-eight percent. And we're providing a ten-to-fifteen-foot green space between our nearest pavement and the top of bank, which is a good improvement from what's out there now. The third goal, as I mentioned, is to construct stormwater management improvements throughout the site to really minimize runoff flowing overland down that steep slope to the river. So I just, I just gave you the rundown of stormwater management. We've got three practices throughout the site. We've got significant reduction in runoff leaving the site, and we've really eliminated that existing overland flow condition down the bank and into the river. Mr. Chair, it's worth noting that the project did receive a use variance from the zoning board for eighteen units back in May of last year. And as I mentioned, we also received a favorable recommendation from the Conservation Commission in September of last year as well. There was a little bit of a quirky situation with that. Due to the property being located within the city's urbanized shoreline exemption zone, there was no special exception required for the wetland buffer impact. Instead, the Conservation Commission comments go straight to the planning board as recommendations. And I believe we have incorporated most or all of those recommendations into our design. Mr. Chair, there was one site plan waiver associated with this application. It's dated, the letter is dated June twenty-second, twenty nineteen. I'd be happy just to paraphrase that letter very quickly.
Sure.
We're seeking a waiver to allow thirty-six parking spaces to be provided onsite where a maximum allowed by code is thirty-four spaces. So as you know, for multifamily uses, the code allows a range between one-point-five and one-point-nine spaces per unit, which would be twenty-seven to thirty-four for this project. We need to provide two spaces per unit, that being one garage space inside the building and one space in each of the driveways. And we believe providing two spaces per unit is reasonable, given the urban nature of the site, and will also help minimize the need for any on-street parking along Lock Street. Furthermore, we believe the intent of the regulation to try to discourage the creation of unnecessary impervious surfaces, a situation which results in less green space and more stormwater runoff. This is not the case with this project, as the slight overage in spaces is more due to the result of us providing garage spaces for each unit rather than generating more impervious area for those parking spaces. So we would ask the board to view that waiver request favorably. In summary, Mr. Chair, we think that the proposed project is being developed in a responsible manner and is a great opportunity to convert an existing industrial property into residential units, which would be a better fit within the primarily residential neighborhood and also help increase that city's housing stock where desperately needed. We have reviewed the staff report and are okay with the suggestion, suggested conditions of approval with one exception. Suggested condition of number four, we may suggest that it be amended to say if and when the property is converted to a condominium form of ownership. So our client is leaning towards creating a condominium for these units, but wants to keep the flexibility open to allow rental units if so desired. As other cases have stated, we live in a rather uncertain time, so maximum flexibility is certainly desired for these type of projects. That similar condition and the wording for it was granted for that ninety-three Lock Street approval that I mentioned. So we would just ask for some flexibility in case this project does want to be rentals. The way the condition reads now would kind of lock us into a condo or would appear to lock us into a condominium. We did have discussions this past week with the engineering department and are confident that we can address any of the remaining comments. I do know there was an updated memorandum from Mr. Mendola for this project, I believe dated July thirtieth. We're confident we can address those comments in working with Mr. Hudson and Mr. Mendola. So respectfully, Mr. Chair, we seek your approval here tonight, and myself or the project team would be happy to answer any questions I get. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Can you, that sort of T-handle at the bottom of the page that you have shown, that's a turnaround. I mean, that's the dumpster that's gonna be stored down there, and I guess is that a turnaround for fire as well? Is that?
Go ahead, Mr. Chair. It's kind of a dual purpose there. You've got the dumpster in that location, but the T-turnaround is really more for fire access. We did run fire truck turning templates, movements through the site, and provided those to the fire department as part of their sign-off for this project.
Now, would there be any parking allowed down there? And if not, is it, was the intent to sign it or not would you?
I just wanted to check the plans, double-check. There aren't parking signs in that location along, along the river.
Okay.
As requested by the fire department.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure on that. Okay. Thanks. Of course, and you said it was all underground utilities?
Yes. Yeah, we have new overhead services coming across the street. Once we're onsite, then yes, we're all, we're all underground with our services.
And can you describe the buffer to the east and west a little bit, like intent there? I mean, there's, is that existing buffer? Is there any new plantings, things like that?
Yep. I'll try to scroll through and here's our landscape plan that was prepared for this project. So as I mentioned, there are existing, there is existing vegetation located on both sides of the property as well as along the riverbank. The vegetation along the riverbank is outside of our property limits. We're not proposing any impact to that. It's fairly well-vegetated now. On the easterly side of the property, there is a pretty good buffer there. It's kind of a combination of some larger mature trees, as well as some low-growth vegetation. So we've, we've committed to saving those trees and maintaining that buffer as best possible. We have represented to the Conservation Commission and to staff that we may need to limb a few of those mature trees on our side of the line as the canopy for some of those trees are rather large. But in looking at the footprint of these founding, these building foundations, these will all be a slab on grade, so there won't be any deep excavations related to the building construction. So we do think we can save a number of those trees and maintain that easterly buffer. On the westerly side is our existing buffer with the church. There's kind of a more thinly low-growth buffer in that location between our existing parking lot, and there's a little bit of a slope going up to the church property. The church property has made some improvements along their side of the line. There's a small retaining wall that you'll see in this location here. So this is more low-growth on that side, but again, we're gonna try to maintain that as best possible. The, the tree line and the vegetation is basically geared to the property line on both sides. So we'll do our best to maintain those buffers.
Can you indicate where the new, you said the utility is, there's a new service pole? Because it's kind of a pole back in the driveway or something in the existing. Like sort of back on the site.
Yep, so I'll just describe it for you here. This plan is a little busy. We've got, we've got individual sewer and water services for each of these units. So bear with me, but the existing, well, let me, let me jump to the existing plan. I think the service you're referencing, Mr. Chair, and the poles are in this location right here. It then goes across and services the church as well as this building. There's also an existing pole here with a guy wire, a tree guy, that actually comes across our property and ties into that tree. So we met with the representatives from Eversource, and their recommendation is reflected on our plan. So on the easterly side of the property, we've got a new overhead line and service here, and then we go underground into the building. That tree guy will be removed, and there'll be a guy, you know, typical guy wire going to the ground on the east side of the property. On the west side of the property, we've got two overhead services and two riser poles, one for us and one for the church. We're gonna maintain that existing overhead service for the church to tie into their same location, and then we've got an underground service going into a short run into our building. So it will be overhead across Lock Street and underground once onsite.
Okay. All right. Other questions of the applicant by the board, Mr. Varley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I know you address generally the, the current outstanding letter from Joe Mendola, the one dated July thirtieth. I just wonder if you could speak specifically to the question that was raised in that letter about the adequacy of the existing sewer service. I know the engineering department had requested specifically that you explore that. I'm just wondering if, if that's something that you've, you've done since receiving that letter or if that's something that still needs to be investigated.
Yeah, so, so what we did on that one, Adam, is we're proposing, as DPW has asked us to to try to reuse that existing service. It's an existing six-inch service that we believe is adequately sized to service this project. We don't know the condition of that service. It's located in this location here on the screen. We had previously indicated trying to make a connection out in Lock Street. The interceptor runs through that. There's a sixty-inch outlet pipe, and there's a big vault structure in the, in the street. And we had originally proposed tying into that structure, which would be admittedly a difficult connection. So in working with Mr. Mendola, we revised the design to tie into the existing service, and we have a note on the plan that prior to construction, the contractor showed video of that service and, and the results of that in terms of its size, location, and condition will be provided to both us as the engineer and the engineering department.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions of the applicant by the board?
Weber.
Go ahead, Mr. Weber.
Question on the butamis, noting the closeness of this to the river, and a question for David Hudson. I'd like his response to it also. The use of porous butamis in lieu of, I'm not sure that's what you're gonna be using. It's not, I don't see it spelled out. So it's a, what I've read and about it, it's a good thing to have porous so that it doesn't go on into the buffer, any watershed doesn't go into the that, and it sheds stuff very well. So please, both of you, respond to that.
I can go first, if that's okay?
Sure.
So I represented that we have a fairly robust stormwater management program and design here. We certainly agree that porous pavement is a valuable tool that we have to, to address stormwater management. In this case, we've gone with a little more formal treatment practices in terms of small surface basins. There's always a concern with porous pavement in regards to cost, but also with maintenance and lifespan and its ability to hold up in winter conditions. So while we've used porous pavement many times, we sometimes prefer to go with other treatment methods first, if available. So that's what we've done in this, in this case. It was something that, that the Conservation Commission asked us to look at as well, and we just felt like the, the treatment practices that we were proposing would maybe be a little, have a little more longevity in terms of with porous pavement and some long-term maintenance and upkeep concerns. As I noted, we are significantly reducing the, the peak flows leaving the site under all storm events and are really capturing and treating everything onsite, you know, for the fifty-year storm in that location, which is, I think, a six-and-a-half-inch storm last time I, I checked. So I, I agree with the comment that it's a great tool to have, but we didn't go in that direction on this project.
Yeah, and I'd, I'd agree with that. It is a good tool. I think what the applicant has proposed kind of does the same thing in a different way. It still provides infiltration, but in another area instead of right through the pavement. So porous pavement is, is good. It has its application. In this case, I think they're achieving the same thing in another way, which is satisfactory.
Okay, thank you. Another question. On the, in the south part where the pavement butts into the, or is the closest to the river, will any truck oil spill or anything, would that leak towards or away from the buffer zone?
It will leak away from the river. You're talking about the T-type turnaround in, in this location here.
Yes, that's my concern.
That is, that is all curved, Mr. Weber, and it pitches away. So this, this part of the T pitches towards this stormwater basin, and this part of the T pitches towards this stormwater basin. So this area along the river is purposely bermed up, as I mentioned. One of the goals was to really prevent any overland flow from, from going down the slope into the river. So all of our drainage will pitch away from the river towards those stormwater treatment practices.
Great, thank you very much. That's it.
Mr. Varley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, Tom, sorry, just one more question. I know you mentioned that the, the asbestos on the site had been remediated and had been capped. I just want to confirm, because one of the conditions we have in the, in the staff report is, that the, that the work was conducted in accordance with the DES regulations for asbestos disposal. I just want to confirm that the intent here would be not to disturb the asbestos that's on the site, correct?
Correct, correct. That's why in this back portion of the site, we've gone with very shallow stormwater practices, surface-type practices. And we're also, not only in the back of the site, but in the middle of the site, we're also slightly raising grade in those areas to make sure that we're staying as high as possible and not encountering any, any, any of that existing asbestos cap. So those, the, the condition of approval that references the two state regulations, that's fine. And as I mentioned, we don't anticipate disturbing that existing cap as part of this project.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. Other questions for the applicant by the board? Or maybe you could stop sharing your screen for a sec. I can just see them a little bit better. You can bring it back up. I'm pretty neat. Thanks. Any other questions for the applicant by the board? Being none, at this point, I will open up the, to the general audience, anybody listening in. If you'd like to make a comment or have a question of the applicant, you can go ahead and unmute and hit your name and address for record, and then hit your comment or question. Yeah, I'm not hearing or seeing anybody with any questions. At this point, I would leave open the hearing for one, any last final questions of the applicant or staff by the board. Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing on this item, new business number seven, and move into the meeting. So we've got a eighteen-unit development here proposed for this previously industrial site. It seems like a pretty well-laid-out concept. It seems like a pretty well-laid out concept for, for a site that, and quite an improvement, I guess, from what's there, in my opinion. Seems to be thoughtfully taking care of the runoff and the buffers. So I'm kind of in favor of everything I'm seeing here. But I welcome any comments by the board as well. Mr. Barley?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I would concur with what you said. It seems to be a well-designed plan and, you know, I went by the site a couple of times and would agree that it appears to me that it would represent a significant improvement to do the current site. So I'm certainly in favor of the, of the plan. I did just want to add as a technical item, I know Sazak asked that we modify condition number four, just to provide that it, it would be if the applicant elects to utilize condominium ownership, that that condition would apply and that seems like a reasonable request. So I would be in favor of that as well.
Okay. Mr. Barley, any other comments of the board in the meeting? Okay, hearing none. Would somebody like to make a motion regarding case number seven? Mr. Barley?
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve new business number seven site plan with FavorFolio LLC owner. Site plan to construct a multi-family residential development at 111-113 Lock Street. Finding that the plan does meet the requirements outlined in site plan, NRO section 190-146D, with a total of seven stipulations. The first stipulation is a waiver request of NRO section 190-198. And that is a waiver request for 36 parking spaces where 34 are permitted. And that waiver read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number two, I would just update the date there. I believe that the updated date should be a letter from Joe Mandola dated July 30th, 2020. Stipulation number three is written in the staff report. Stipulation number four, I would amend to indicate or to add the following preceding language, that if the applicant elects to utilize a condominium form of ownership, then prior to the owner, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall provide documents establishing a homeowners or condominium association, which shall be responsible for maintaining all property in common ownership. Stipulations number five, six and seven, as written in the staff report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Barley. So we have a motion to approve with the stipulations as stated by Mr. Barley. Do we have a second on that motion?
Second by Weber.
Second by Mr. Weber. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, can we get a roll vote on that, please?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Alderman Tenzel?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
Pass the eight to zero.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Tenzel.
All right. Okay, so moving on, new business site plan, case number eight. National Housing and Redevelopment Authority owner, Boston Capital Corporation and Nashville Housing and Redevelopment Authority applicant. This is an application and acceptance of proposed amendment to NR 1212 to show redevelopment of the Bronstein Apartment Complex. Property is located at 41 Center Street, Central Street, excuse me. So at first I'll ask if there's anybody on the board that has had a chance to review this application, wants to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction.
So moved.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Peterson to take jurisdiction. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion on that?
Mr. Chairman, it's Dave Tenz, if I may. I actually have to recuse myself on this as a result of Attorney Leonard's involvement with this site plan. So I will not be voting and I'm going to, I guess, excuse myself from the meeting at this point as is our practice.
Okay, thank you, Alderman Tenzel. Any further discussion before we take a roll vote on jurisdiction? Okay, seeing none, we can go ahead and take a roll vote on this.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Okay, so we have jurisdiction now of new business number eight site plan. So everybody from the applicant, or start the presentation or discussion?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Jim Petropolis with Hayner Swanson. Can everybody hear and see me, Mr. Chair?
Yes, we can. Yep, loud and clear.
Okay, thanks. Jim Petropolis, Hayner Swanson, 3 Congress Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. Tonight representing Boston Capital Corporation and Nashville Housing and Redevelopment Authority, co-applicants for this case. With me this evening is Rich Mazzaki with Boston Capital Corporation, Lynn Lombardi with Nashville Housing Redevelopment Authority, Attorney Jay Leonard is our project attorney for the project, and Steve Purnoz, our traffic consultant, and Steve joins us as well. As just reading to the record, Mr. Chair, we're seeking a site plan approval for the redevelopment of the Bronstein Apartment Complex. I'm really here tonight to present the facts of the project and then myself and team members would be happy to answer any questions the board or the public may have. Before I get into the description and details of the project, and in an effort to save some time this evening, I'd like to give you a quick overview of how and why this project came to be. For a number of years, the Nashville Housing and Redevelopment Authority has really wished to redevelop the Bronstein Apartment Site in order to increase the amount of affordable living units available in downtown Nashua. They recently partnered with Boston Capital Corporation, a company that has vast experience in developing affordable residential projects in urban areas. And again, the goal is to develop an urban residential rental project that be an integral part of the central city as it develops really from the Broad Street Parkway towards Main Street. If completed, all units will be managed by and in accordance with the Nashville Housing and Redevelopment Authority rules and procedures. And in case you're wondering, all existing residents have been notified of the project. All will be relocated to allow for the demolition and construction of the project. And all residents will have the option to return once the units are complete. So let me get started with my presentation. I'm going to call up a couple of plans. Okay, so. Can everybody see my drawings on the screen?
Not yet, no. I'm going to hit share there.
Okay.
Yeah, they're coming up.
Is that good?
Yep, we're good.
Okay, thank you. So I'm sure most members know where the site is located. And this can be seen on the aerial, the property really sits at the corner of Central Street and Pine Street, which is really one of the early points of the Broad Street Parkway. The site itself measures 4.1 acres in size and is owned RC, urban residence. Again, the property is bordered by Central Street to the south, Pine Street to the west. Myrtle Street, which is a public street here located to the north and the Plus Company is our direct abutter to the east. It is interesting to take a look at this property in relationship to some of the surrounding uses and zoning. Across Central Street, you have a number of the tree streets, which is a traditional multi-family RC-type housing. To the west and to the north, we have a general industrial zone that's overlaid by the mixed-use overlay district. And it contains a number of very different uses from commercial to a church to residences. We have clock tower place to the north and also directly abutting our property to the north is the one Chestnut Street building. And to the east, as I mentioned, we have the Plus Company, we have the Oval, the former Ford House, which is now being redeveloped as Penetra's new headquarters. So you can see the site is, it's got an interesting location with its, both its surrounding zoning and its surrounding uses. And because of these factors, you probably saw that the zoning board of adjustment granted six-dimensional variances recently for this project having to do with density, open space setbacks, floor area ratio and parking for the front yard setback. How is background? The Bronstein Apartments complex was built in the late 1960s. There are six residential units, the total 48 units. There's a small little daycare head start facility located here where my cursor is. All of the bedrooms in the development are three, four and five bedroom apartment units. There are currently 84 parking spaces to the project. Access is from Central Street and also Myrtle Street. Other than one curb cut here on Central, there really is no direct access to Central or to Pine Street. I mentioned Myrtle earlier. Myrtle is a public street and it does provide access to main bodies of the parking lot here for Bronstein in two locations. This project and property has the necessary utilities to support a multi-family project as we're proposing this evening. Now I'd like to go to the site plan if I could.
Yeah.
There we go. So here's what's being proposed, to redevelop the Bronstein Apartment Complex by demolishing the existing buildings in sight and constructing a new multi-family residential development. The new project will contain four, four-story buildings for a total of 216 units. Building A is an L-shaped building in the western part of the site that will contain 79 units. Building B is also an L-shaped building that will contain 83 units. Now the entrances to these facilities are inside the elbow here and they will access into the parking lots here in the site. The buildings have been placed up along Pine Street and Central Street. And so for security purposes, the entrances are really on the north side of those two structures. Building C is a more traditional four-story garden-style building with its main entrance located here on the east side. There are 36 units in Building C. And then Building D is also a four-story building. It will contain 18 units. The first level of Building D will include management offices, community amenities for the residents and an upgraded daycare facility. The daycare facility, Mr. Chairman, only operates for about four hours a day, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And right now it has about 15 students and staff combined in that facility. So it's a fairly benign use. Site gets a complete makeover. Myrtle Street again will remain in its current location. New parking proposed between Building A and Building B. New parking on the north side and then new parking on the east side of Building C. 229 parking spaces are proposed. Parking is also provided on the north side of Myrtle Street, 24 parking spaces. But because that is a public way, we did not take into account those 24 spaces. With regard to stormwater, you know, the new project adds a little bit over an acre of impervious cover to the site. We propose to curb and catch basin the parking areas to capture a runoff. We propose to height that discharge into two subsurface underneath parking recharge basins. We want to take advantage of some favorable soils we have in deep conditions. Sands typically in this part of Nashua, no high groundwater. And the result is significant reduction in peak rates that leave our site that ultimately end up in the drainage system into Myrtle Street. New LED lighting throughout the project, new landscaping, as you can see here throughout the project as well. We did submit a traffic report prepared by Steve Purnoz, Steve is with us tonight. The report compared new trips to the new development compared to the previous development. As you know, the traffic impact report worksheet that we prepared here in Nashua, we did not meet the thresholds for any further study. Staff did have several traffic-related comments that I believe Mr. Purnoz has addressed to the satisfaction of Mr. Husband. Architecturals were submitted as part of our application. Here are some illustrations of the buildings. I think this is actually Building A, which is the L-shaped building. I'm not an architect, but I'll touch upon a couple of key features. You'll notice the four stories, 46 feet in height, flat roof, combination of various materials and colors on the exterior of the building. These are not the colors, these are just for purposes of illustrations for our submission. The colors have yet to be determined. And again, these buildings are situated along Central and Pine to give it more of an urban feel than currently exists. If successful, Mr. Chairman, the project would begin work in the spring of 2021. And it's about a two-year project to construct the full development. Our application did include three waiver items. Original letter was submitted on July 22, but I had to make it to a last-minute amendment. So it's revised dated 6 August today. And the three waivers have to do with the following. We're seeking a parking reduction. Your Nashville Land Use Code requires a minimum of 324 parking spaces. Where 229 are provided. Again, I fall back on the purpose of the project. Again, it's to provide more affordable housing units in the downtown area. Our waiver letter goes into much greater detail. But the consideration for this waiver should be given to the fact that, again, it's an urban project. There are two public parking structures about 1,000 feet away on both High and Elm Street. There's parking along the local city streets. The project would have the benefit of probably using during evenings the 24 spaces along Myrtle Street here that we did not include in our number. The project is close to downtown, has public transportation. In fact, there is a public bus stop located on Central Street. A designated public bus stop. The project scored an 82 out of 100 on something called Walk Score. This is a service that measures the walkability of a particular project or location. What 82 out of 100 means is it's quote-unquote very walkable and that most errands can be accomplished on foot. The second waiver had to do with this stretch of parking right here. Your code asks for interior landscape islands when you exceed a row of 10 cars for interior parking lots. This particular row has 14 spaces. We asked for the waiver, Mr. Chairman, because we went with larger end cap units here. It's more than offsets the loss of, you know, a single island located in the middle of this bay. And of course, putting an island in the middle just kind of disrupts bowing during the winter. The third option, I'm sorry, the third waiver request had to do with the width of the parking spaces. Nashville Land Use Code requires nine feet. We're proposing to use eight and a half by 20-foot spaces. It's fairly common in many municipalities and in the industry. And what it allows for is for the redeveloped project to gain, you know, 12 to 15 more parking spaces than if a nine-foot wide space was used. Again, the formal waiver letter, which you have on record, goes into greater detail about how a strict enforcement of these regulations would create an unnecessary hardship to the application. And that granting the waivers would not harm the public private rights and people, the spirit and intent of the regulations. I'm happy to go into that further if you'd like, Mr. Chairman. But I think what I'd prefer to do is maybe just kind of work through, work through the end of my presentation. Work through the the end of my presentation and answer any detailed questions the board may have. A couple of other quick items of no no dumpsters on the project. Trash would be contained internally. And then on day and pickup day, they would be wheeled out, a small portable. Unit would be wheeled out into the parking lot where it would be picked up. So there's no dumpsters provided on the site. You're probably, somebody's probably going to ask about snow storage. There's limited areas for snow storage on the on the site, we understand that, again, it's a it's an urban development. Snow, significant snow will need to be trucked off site and disposed of in a in a legal manner. As I conclude, Mr. Chairman, in summary, you know, we think the Bronstein redevelopment project's an important project for Nashua for really the following reasons. There's a significant demand for affordable housing within the city core. The project offers rental income for many rental housing for many income groups, different sized families. The bedroom breakdown for the development is a combination of one bedroom units. I'll walk through that sixty three one bedrooms, ninety three two bedrooms, thirty seven three bedrooms, nineteen four bedrooms. And four or five bedroom units. So there's a a wonderful blend of unit sizes. For this project. The project's well suited for redevelopment because it's A, it's zoned properly. And B, it has the necessary infrastructure to support a project like this. Again, I go back to the aerial map where you see the 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 nice geometry of the site. Four point two acre size where you have many RC developed sites that are basically one, two and three family homes. So we've got the infrastructure to be able to support a project like this. And then lastly, the project complies with the downtown and city master plans. We are aware of of a couple of letters that have been submitted to the city. There were also four or five letters in support that were submitted, Mr. Chairman. They were submitted as part of our zoning application. I don't know if they made it into the planning application. I do have those letters of support and if there's interest in me reading these or citing these, I'm happy, I'm happy to do so this evening. In conclusion, we believe our application is complete. The conditions of approval that staff has outlined in the report are are fine, they're acceptable. There's comment letters from the fire department and from engineering, both groups we have addressed. Verbally and communicated with and have a good a good understanding of their the very fair comments. And we believe they're easily addressed and it would not adversely impact the project. So we're here to answer any questions you have, and that concludes my presentation.
Thanks, Jim. So I've got a couple of questions I'll put out there and and kind of get the board to ask theirs as well. Can you, you you mentioned there's a bus stop on Central Street. I guess I'm envisioning that could be significant use of a bus stop here. Is there, I mean, is there? There's no thought of an internal bus stop or or an actual inset off the roadway? A bus? Stop, is that, is that, was that discussed or thought about, is there any?
Yeah, you know, we're providing, Mr. Chairman, we're providing good sidewalk access to Central Street. While I can't pinpoint the exact location of the bus stop, we know it's out there, we know there's a school bus stop there as well. So it currently exists and we're providing good access. We don't anticipate a a public bus transit actually entering into the site and using the site for any type of pickup. So it would be along Central Street.
It would be, and there there's no, it's not feasible to have a pull off or something. I'm I'm just wondering if there might be. The significant use that could, you know, literally cause something to be stopped in the street for a significant amount of time.
My recollection, Mr. Chairman, of Central Street is that there's some, that there is some street parking here on Central. But there's also a widened shoulder and I may be, I may be wrong, but I believe it's signed, no parking bus stop. I think there is a designated area on Central.
Okay, so you you think it, so they could use, they'd essentially use the parking. What is like, there's no parking in that, okay.
It's a it's a widened shoulder and I believe there's signage there as a as a public bus stop, so.
Okay, they can pull it up. And then with a school bus, use the same thing?
I think the school bus, we have seen school buses back down in this location right here where you have the benefit of widened pavement on Central. I think it works and, you know, if somebody from, you know, the Housing Authority or our team, if they wish to speak later, they could maybe address that, but.
Okay.
I believe it currently works today and will continue to work, yeah.
Yeah, all right, I'll leave that open. I guess I still do have a little bit of concern because of the number, the increase in the number of people. But we'll we'll move to another question of mine. How about phasing? Is there an intent to phase this construction? Is there like a building that would, you know, where Building A be occupied while the rest of the site is still under construction?
So, you know, it's a really good question. Demolition and site improvements will all occur at the same time.
Yeah.
Okay. And it appears that the project will progress from Building A to B to C to D. It is likely that Building A will be completed and probably seek some form of occupancy in advance of the other buildings. If that's the case, we would probably want to work with staff and make sure that these site improvements were complete. And that there was good safe. Good safety measures put in place so that the residents in A weren't interfering with construction in other parts of the project. We really haven't got to that level of detail, but I, that's the general gist as as I was told the project will be developed.
Yeah, I think that's a benefit probably in this scenario to get that some of it up and running. Particularly with the, you know, the fact that we have relocated residents that, you know, ideally might want to come back, so. What about bike parking, bicycle?
We could certainly consider, Mr. Chairman, getting a bicycle rack within this project, sure. With Mine Falls Park just to the north, it's a good idea.
Yeah, I think there could be a significant number of bicycles here, right? So, and I think trucking them into the building or laying, leaving them around the site might be a problem. You you may want more than one.
Yeah.
A few. Okay.
They don't take up a lot of space, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, yeah, I just think having the racks there where they can be secured might be something we'll be looking for. You you didn't, there is no fencing along Central proposed, is there?
So there is fencing right now, as you know, there's a, there's, I think it's black aluminum about four foot fencing. There's chain link fencing currently along the plus company property line.
Yeah.
And then there's more decorative fencing here. We've had discussions with with Boston Capital on this. It appears that that, you know, the fencing will likely stay up during construction just to provide some sort of type of little security and in in some separation. But fencing will be, will be, as of as of right now, the fencing will be taken down when when the project is built up, yeah.
Okay. He talked about fences. Do you, is there any provision for this for, at least in the design? And I'm not sure this is for civil, but it might be. I mean, there's a lot of roof area here. Is there any thought or has there been discussion about solar panels or anything on this development? Or at least the design to accommodate it?
Yeah, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'll I'll, we'll sit tight on that question as somebody from either Boston Capital or Nashville Housing Redevelopment speaks, maybe they can address that.
Okay, and then maybe at the same time, I think if we could talk about the architectural features and the cladding and at least like the maybe a little more discussion about. What are some of the the material colors and schemes that are being thought about?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I know Project Architect. Jason from Markets Where Architects is is on this evening. Sure, at the appropriate time, he let us, I'm sure, I'm sure Jason could give you a better answer than I can on that.
Okay, well, I'll hold the architectural and then sort of bus and access stuff. Maybe I'll open it to the board real quick. Are there questions specific to the civil nature of the site, Mr. Marley?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know, I mean, these are, these are not necessarily engineering questions, but I figured I would, I would put them out there now. And this may be for representatives from the Housing Authority more so. But sort of two related questions. One, Mr. Fair, sort of a follow up to your phasing question, which is, you know, Jimmy, you mentioned that the. That the current residents would be relocated during construction. And I'm wondering if you could just go into a bit more detail about what that relocation plan looks like. And then also in terms of when the the new buildings are construction are are constructed. I I know you you indicated that they would continue to be owned, managed by the Housing Authority and subject to the rules and regulations of the authority. I just wondered if you could speak to whether there would be any changes in the rental structure, rental cost. Or whether the, you know, the rental rates would be maintained essentially equivalent with what they are now.
Sure, Adam, I I think there's people in our team better prepared to answer those questions than I am. So let's let's get in the column of, we will respond in a moment with the Housing Authority folks.
Yeah, that's perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the board have questions, again, maybe related to the site while we have the state engineer here?
Mr. Chairman?
Question.
Go, go ahead, Mr. Hirsch first.
How how is the parking going to work coming in from Myrtle Street? Is it, they're going to be curbing there or it looks like the parking loads directly from Myrtle Street? Am I misreading the plan?
Yep, so, so access to the new development will be a two way access on Central Street.
Right.
There'll be no direct access, other, no, no direct access on I. And then, of course, here's Myrtle Street. We'll have two curb cuts on Myrtle Street that will facilitate this parking area here. There'll be no curving there, they'll just be open, open curb cuts. As well as this location where we connect the Eastern Lee parking into Myrtle Street as well. And that's somewhat how it exists today. Myrtle Street is, as I said at the beginning, it's an interesting public street. It is not a through street, it it ends in this location here. Currently provides access to Bronstein. And it does provide some parking for the one Chestnut Building. Our clients have had discussions with one Chestnut. Actually, that's one of the letters of support we have this evening. They like the plan, they like the parking on the north side because they do have a door right here that several of the residents use. I hope that answers your question, Mr. Hirsch.
It looks like it's double loaded parking along that strip in front of what building? Building D, Myrtle Street, is that?
So we are, we are, we received a variance to construct these forty two parking spaces right here along Myrtle. Then we'll back out onto Myrtle, that's a little non traditional, but again, we're trying to create a an urban project. So we've got a double row of parking here, we've got a single row of head in parking, and then we have parallel parking here. So on our property, we have two hundred and twenty nine spaces and then there's twenty four additional parallel parking spaces on Myrtle Street.
Okay, thank you, Jimmy, answer my question.
Yeah, thank you.
Was there somebody else on the board, Mr. Peterson?
Yes, I have a question. Either to the applicant or to the staff. When I look at the staff report, page one, in the project description, part three. It says there are four four story buildings and one two story building. Yet when I looked at the through the drawings at the master site plan, page one of the of of twenty three pages. Shows four buildings, so where it shows four four story buildings. So where is the two story building located?
Well, Mr. Peterson, I can answer that. And if Linda wants to jump in, she's she's more than welcome to. There are only four. Four story buildings. We did have an initial concept that had three four story buildings and one two story building. So that may have created some confusion when the report was prepared. But the application, everything has been based on what you're seeing here this evening, four buildings, four stories.
Okay, so any reference to the two story building we can disregard?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I I have another question. On. July twenty ninth, Mark Rapaglia from the Fire Department submitted some comments. And one was. His assessment fitting a fire truck apparatus in there would be difficult as well as locations of. Of a fire hydrants. And have those issues been addressed?
Yes, as I mentioned, as I mentioned during my presentation, as we received that comment from from Nashville Fire Department. I immediately followed up with, you know, an email correspondence with Fire Marshal Puglia and Mr. Rapaglia. In in which I commented on their comments. A couple of key things. One, there's a hydrant existing right on Myrtle Street, right about where my cursor is. And they want to keep that hydrant because it it will, it will help in case, and heaven forbid, if there were ever an event at the one Chestnut Street building. So we are going to locate in an island here and protect it with some ballers. We're going to locate that hydro, we're going to move it about ten feet. And and that is to the satisfaction of of Fire Marshal Puglia. The second item is the apparatus. And what we've been seeing and what we've been doing on site plans recently is we have the template. Of the apparatus that they would use for a visit here to the site. And what we do is we actually run that apparatus throughout the entire parking lot in several different locations. And Nashville Fire Rescue initially was concerned about locations here, here, here and here. And in my response back, Mr. Peterson, I had trimmed back a couple of feet. Some of these islands to just assist in providing and meeting those turning movements of that fire apparatus. They also asked me to relocate a hydrant within this particular island. I have since received a fire, an email correspondence from the Fire Department saying, you know, they were satisfied with my responses. But I just didn't have time to put pen to paper on the plan for this evening.
Okay, well, thank you for explaining that.
Yep.
From the board, any other questions for the civil engineer?
I have a couple of questions.
Sure, go ahead, Ms. Harper.
One, do you think that the client would be amenable to perhaps putting fencing back up after the project? And I only ask this because, I mean, currently, you know, I see young children outside playing all the time. And Pine Street and Central Street are are pretty busy streets to be playing near.
Well, let's ask him. I'm sure they'll speak to that question.
Okay, okay. And then I guess my other one is, i- if you know what the plan is for snow storage, because it does look like a tough site for snow.
I I agree, as I said, you know, it is an urban site. And if we get a coating and there's either no plowing or very little plowing, I I don't think that's an issue. Where we get into issues is, you know, with a significant storm event. A lot of times you'll see multifamily projects push it into a pile. It will eat up anywhere from five to ten to fifteen to twenty parking spaces and it stays all winter. That's not, that's not what we want. So we've talked at length with Boston Capital about this and they've agreed. Yeah, it's the kind of site that during a significant storm event, snow is going to have to be trucked off site and disposed in a legal manner.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? And maybe we can hear from someone who could talk a little bit about the relocations and the renting and stuff like that.
Okay, fair enough. I'm not sure.
I'm definitely happy to speak about it. Hi, everyone. My name is Lynn Lombardi. I am the Executive Director at the Nashua Housing and Redevelopment Authority, located at 40 East Pearl Street in Nashua, New Hampshire. What we've done is we have hired a consultant out of Massachusetts who strictly deals with the relocation of residents during projects such as this. The company's name is Housing Opportunities Unlimited, very good at what they do. We've worked with them already to design a workable relocation plan, using and complying with things such as the Uniform Relocation Act, which is a requirement when you're undertaking projects such as this. Housing Opportunities Unlimited has already, with the cooperation of National Housing and Redevelopment Authority, we've had, held a couple of video meetings with residents to discuss what this might all look like, well in advance of any plans occurring. We followed that up with individual calls. We still have a few families that need to be contacted who are limited English proficiency. But we did follow everything up with a fax page in both English and Spanish to the residents at Bronstein to give them sort of another overview. And our biggest goal is to provide residents with what's needed as far as information services, you know, resident services, and the assistance that they're going to need to identify comparable housing units that might be approximate to their work, schools, childcare, and other location needs that, that they're going to need. And we have intentions of, of, you know, working with families individually to assist them in finding alternative housing while they're displaced from their current housing. And we may also work with housing brokers to assist us with this process. Also keeping in mind that, as a housing authority, we own 662 units of public housing, and some of those units can also be used for transfers as people vacate. So they can actually move from public, one public housing unit located at Bronstein to another one at a, at a separate location. And then, as you know, we, we currently operate 896 Section 8 vouchers. And so we work with most of the landlords, the larger landlords, and some smaller ones in the city of Nashua, who will be able to assist us with locating comparable housing. And I hope that kind of answers some of your questions. We'll also pay for the relocation costs, which is extremely important because we do not want to provide any resident with the burden of having to move themselves. So we will be providing them with the costs associated with their moves. When they do move, they will, all 48 families will receive a Section 8 housing choice voucher to move to another unit if they do not move to a public housing unit. And that way, we can assure that no one is paying more in rent than what they're currently paying. And they will have the right to first refuse, refusal when it comes to the development being completed in its phases. The residents will have the right to return. And again, once they do return, they will not be paying more in rent. I know one of you did ask a little bit about what the rental structures are. We're going to house 96 families at 60% or below the area median income. 34 additional families will be housed at 80% or below the area median, median income. 76 families will receive project-based vouchers. And so that will also assist us in keeping the rents low. If we can put more project-based vouchers or even house applicants who are on our Section 8 waiting list, that will also further subsidize their rents. And so there's a lot of opportunities for a really great story here. As you know, we, as the Housing Authority, we've been around since 1947. Our current portfolio of properties really has not increased over the past 20 years. I've been with the Housing Authority now for 26. And there is a huge need for additional affordable housing. I think what we're seeing is a lot of market rate housing going up in the city. And we need to counter that with, with more affordable housing so that we can continue to support the lowest-income individuals who are in need of it. And this is just going to be a great story and, and a great, you know, addition to the community to further assist families right now. Just to give you a little bit of background, our two-bedroom waiting list, families are waiting upwards of eight years. And so as you'll see on this proposal, that's our largest bedroom size right now. We need to, we need to meet that need. So are there any other questions that I might?
Maybe, where, where are you in the process of that, the relocation assistance and stuff? Essentially, how, how many folks?
Right now? Well, as, as far as the relocation process, we have not yet begun. What, what's going to happen with our relocation plan and under the guidelines through HUD when you do redevelopment? Because as you, as you know, we, we are federally funded, we are fully federally funded under the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. We are required under this Rental Assistance Demonstration Program to provide each of the families with a 90-day notice before any relocation happens. HOU, Housing Opportunities Unlimited, will be working within the community to begin locating housing, along with the Housing Authority working with its landlords and to, to locate affordable housing and, and certainly comparable housing for the families. But there is no one yet who has been relocated, and we have no intentions of beginning that process until we, we know that we're able to, you know, proceed with the, with the development process.
Okay.
So really, all it's been is, is a lot of discussions and communication with the residents.
Okay. Folks on the board, any questions for Ms. Lombardi?
Weber?
Mr. Weber?
Yes, great that, what you're doing. Do you have a percentage of the increase in low-income housing this will do?
Well, we're going to go from, only 10 of the units in total are going to be market rate. And as far as the low income, we're looking at about a 75% increase overall. You know, we're going from 48 units to 206.
Yeah, great, thank you. That was Mike.
You're welcome.
Mr. Hudson?
Thank you. Can you just describe the relationship between the Hampshire Housing Authority and Boston Capital Corporation? You know, who's going to, at the end of this project, who's going to own the facility or the land or that sort of thing?
We do plan on approaching this project as co-developers of the, during the development process. And then, at the end of it all, National Housing and Redevelopment Authority will be the sole owner of this property. And that's, that was one of the pieces that was very, very important to us. This is what we do, this is our mission. And, you know, we want to continue to provide low-income housing in the future, in the years to come, and make sure that it's sustainable and that it continues to serve the community.
Thanks. Ms. Harper, any other question?
I, I was just curious if you foresaw any problems with relocating these people within the 90-day period just because of the lack of affordable housing that we do have in the city?
Sure. And that's a great question, and certainly something that we've put a lot of thought into. And I, I don't foresee that the relocation of 48 families is going to be easy. And that's why we've hired a professional consultant who does this. And we do plan on working with all of our landlords and making sure that when this does begin to happen, we're prepared for it. And so, yeah, I do, I do foresee, and, and I think it would be silly of any of us to think that this is going to be, you know, a really easy process. But I think that the plans that we currently have in place are already beginning to address some of those things, such as even bringing in Realtors to help us out, or reaching out, you know, to, to every landlord that we currently work with to see what's out there, what's available, and, and possibly even getting the local landlord association, you know, apprised of what we're doing so that we can continue to open these doors to locate additional units. So, and we also have good relationships with a lot of property owners already in the city. So, great.
Thank you.
Other board questions for Ms. Lombardi? I'm not seeing any. Do we have someone who can talk a little bit more about the, the sort of building look and feel and architectural context, materials, maybe hit on the solar, whether that's still a concept?
Mr. Chairman, yes. Adam Wagner, I believe, from Market Square Architects, representing the project, will speak to those questions.
Great, thanks.
Yes, Adam Wagner, partner with Market Square Architects, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for hearing us tonight. If you wouldn't mind, could you pop up one of the elevation drawings that we provided?
Right?
Yeah, that, that's perfect. And, and I think the, the colors are a little washed out here, just in terms of it being viewing. What about the, the renderings? Do you have those as well?
Adam, I'm sorry, this is, this is all I have for, for, I think, here.
Okay. Okay, well, that's okay, I can. Yeah, let me start with this. So, general, our firm is heavily involved in the multifamily housing market, both market rate and affordable housing. I know you had another one of our projects before you this evening for their one-year renewal. But a lot of what we do is, is housing. And we really don't approach market rate versus affordable housing any differently. And the first thing we want to do is try to break down the scale of the building as best as possible. These are large buildings, there's no question about that. But the way you break down scale is basically jogs in the facade and changes in materials. And so, as you'll see, the, these are not just straightforward boxes, there, there is some articulation in the facade. The, the materials in this case are going to be slightly less expensive material than you might see in a market rate product. That doesn't mean they're cheap materials. They're just selected based on their initial cost and their durability for long-term maintenance. So in this case, it, it, we're proposing mostly vinyl products, vinyl and PVC. But, and I know it's hard to see when you're backed out like this, but we've got a, we've got a Dutch lap siding, we've got a board and batten siding. Really, what we're trying to do is not only provide differences in the color, but also differences in the texture. And as you can see, these are flat-roofed buildings. The, one of the nice things about that is it'll allow us to locate condenser units up on the roof, so they're not scattered all over the property. And I think to your point, Scott, that is going to open us up to the possibility of being solar-ready. You know, we haven't gotten to the point where we have engineered the structure of these buildings. But they're being, they being flat-roofed buildings, certainly, we're going to have access to it. We're going to have mechanical units up there already. Don't know what else I have to say, but I'm, I'm more than happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Yeah, I think you hit, you hit the nail on the head with, I think structurally speaking, if we could just ensure we could build a building that is capable of, you know, I know a lot of solar projects are kind of power purchase agreement type scenarios, you know, and I think we'd want to make it attractive at least for that kind of potential partner in the project as well. So I think that's kind of important to me, anyway, in the, in the process. So we can keep that in mind. But I'll, I'll leave it out to the, I think there was some questions about, I don't know if fencing is really the, if you're the right person, but there might be some other architectural questions on the board here. Anybody else on the board have questions for the architect?
Yes, yes, Ed Weber.
Go ahead, Mr. Weber.
One of the, um, Scott, you talked about the bus stop, not the school bus stop, but the Nashua Transportation. And with this many people, it would be, I think, a really good idea if, with the Nashua Transportation, in getting a covered bus stop for inclement weather, because of the amount of people that are going to be here, so they're not all standing on rain or the snow. And there's going to be a lot of traffic. It's going to be a regular stop because there's going to be a lot of people who take the bus from this area to another one. The other thing, I don't know if it's necessary, but a lot of people now are taking the Lyft, Uber, and whether it's accommodated, and just by them pulling up to the correct building, that might be fine, some, unless it needs to have a designated temporary spot for them to pull in, because a lot of people are going to start using it even more with this. You know, instead of having to pay for their own car and stuff like that, it's, it's really easy for them to use Uber or Lyft. Thank you.
So could someone from the applicant team, maybe, is there, is there any opportunity for covered bus stop waiting here?
This is Jim Petropolis, Mr. Chairman. We'll, we'll certainly take that under advisement with the Boston Capital, National Housing Redevelopment Authority folks. I think it's, it's a very good comment, a fair comment. I did do some checking. We believe where my cursor is right here is a designated city bus stop, and that is in that wide and shoulder area that I talked about earlier, right in this location here. So we'll, we'll take that under advisement. Of course, with the remoteness and with the pandemic, it's, it's always challenging because my clients aren't in the room with me, but we're communicating by text a little bit. Some sentiment is on the fencing is that they would prefer not to do fencing, they're trying not to disrupt some of the, the nice urban streetscape they're trying to create with that sidewalk and with the, the buildings up, up, up against the sidewalk in these locations. There will be a fenced-in playground area located here in between this little courtyard in between buildings B, C, and D. So I, again, we'll take the covered stop under advisement, no fencing. And then Adam answered the, the solar question, yes.
Okay. Other questions from the board for the team here? I'm looking down my list of things that. Sidewalk, Jim, that's being reconstructed completely around the, for the perimeter?
That's all brand-new sidewalk as part of the Parkway project. We're not touching it, we're not disturbing it for any utility abandonment, so it's really going to remain in its current condition. We're making a sidewalk connection here, then all sidewalks. Then all sidewalks in our project are all brand-new, yep.
Could you talk about the lighting on the exterior? I mean, I know there's the lighting in the parking lots. What about interior to the courtyard area or around the facades on Pine and Central? Is there any, any intention of it, or I'm just wondering?
Are you suggesting uplighting of the building or any type of illumination of the building?
Not necessarily, I'm not suggesting that I want it, I just wanted to make sure there isn't, you know, if there is any plan, then we'd want to know about it. You know, landscape level lighting or any of that?
I, I'm not aware of any, I don't know if Adam Webster is still on, if Adam wants to jump in, but I'm, I'm not aware of any specialty lighting between the buildings and these public streets.
Okay, none proposed then, at this point, which I think is okay, I just, obviously there'd be some at the exits and emergency exits. Anything else from the board?
I have another question, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Ms. Harper?
And, and actually perhaps this should be directed to staff, but what is the anticipated impact on the schools in this area?
We do foresee, yeah, that there is definitely going to be some, some impact. I had had a conversation with Heidi Peak, who had directed me to make some phone calls to, to the school to see whether or not we might want to begin initiating those conversations. And she did provide me with the name of the person to call. I have not done that yet, but it is definitely on our list of things to do sooner than later, because they are going to need to know. You know, because there is going to be some, some impact based on, you know, we're, we're quadrupling the density. So that's a really great question, though, and, and it's definitely something we need to, to begin discussing with the school systems.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Weber?
Mr. Weber?
Scott, there is a, a lighting plan that has lighting, are you talking about something extra other than that one?
Yeah, I didn't, I was talking about the wall, the building lighting itself, if there was any potential, you know, or proposed, I should say, but yeah, I saw the stuff in the plan, but I just wanted to make sure there wasn't anything else there.
Okay, I wasn't sure what you were talking about.
Yeah, and is there any, is there any signage proposed anywhere? Has that been discussed? I mean, and not that, again, I'm looking for any, I'm just, you know, stuff that pops up on the streets, you know, that we haven't talked about.
We're not, we're not showing any signage right now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, alright.
And just to follow up on your previous question, I was talking a little bit about it, there were no exterior doors along these buildings. So if you were asking about any doors with any wall packs for those doors, there's nothing along those, those street frontages.
Okay, alright, so all the, sort of all the access to the building and ingress and egress is, is all essentially from the, the right-hand side here?
On the north, that's correct.
Yeah, okay, other than the, the bottom building C, right, that comes in and out off of the parking lot?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else from the board for the applicant?
I have one more.
Yes, go ahead.
I, I'm just curious as to what, what you think the timing will be for the project and about approximately how long you think it's going to take.
So this is Jim Petropolis, so what I've been, what I've been told is that, and again, Ms. Lombardi spoke earlier about, there's a lot of steps that need to take. In a perfect world, in a perfect world, I think we would break ground in mid to late spring of twenty twenty-one, and it's likely a, a two-year project.
Okay.
We would be complete maybe the summer of twenty twenty-three.
Okay, thank you.
But Jim, on the phasing side, do you think, you know, there might be an opportunity for like the Building A to be online? Significantly ahead of that?
I, I, I wouldn't say significantly, it's still, it's a big building, it's some, almost a hundred thousand square feet, it's a good fifteen-month building. So it may be up seven to nine months in advance of, you know, the completion of the overall project.
Okay, alright. If there are any other questions by the board, at this point, I know there's quite a few people at least listening in, I'm not sure if they're listening in for this or not, but I would, I'm going to go ahead and open the floor here for a bit to folks in the audience wishing to voice a question or a comment, and I'd remind you, go ahead and state your name and address for the record.
Yes, could I, could I go first, please?
Sure, go ahead, what's your name and?
Yeah, my address, my name is Paul Hanampa, my last name is spelled J.A.N.A.M.P.A. I live in ninety-four and a half West Hollow Street, Nashville, New Hampshire. I have a few comments, some concerns, really basically three points. One is just the target population that will be moving into this apartment. You know, who are the beneficiaries once this project has been done? I understand that, you know, increasing the supply of rent of, of rental apartments may decrease the cost. But you know, what, towards what kind of housing would the, would have that decrease? The other point is really with the definition of affordable housing. Thank you for, you know, mentioning the percentage of, you know, how many apartments will be below median rate or the average housing rate. That still doesn't, for me at least, that still doesn't tell me what the exact cost of what that would look like. And I wonder, you know, are those apartments that somebody that's earning minimum wage, earning low wages, somebody that's on a fixed income, are those apartments that they could afford? Then the last thing I wanted to bring up is the communication. I know you mentioned that there were notices that were sent to the apartments. I'm wondering how much engagement there was from residents in the decision-making process? Any feedback that was given by them, has it actually been applied to it? And with communication, one thing that I've noticed is that in the, for the meeting minutes, for the National Housing Authority, there hasn't been any minutes since last year, since July nineteenth. So really for any concerned resident that's looking to read those minutes, be more engaged, right, that's, that's unacceptable, because that leaves us in the dark on what's happening with the Nashville, you know, with projects like this. And the concern, the last concern that I have really is the, and you, and it has, it has been brought up before, is the fact that we have less than one percent of vacancy rate in the city of Nashville. And that's, and people that are on wait lists, people that are living paycheck to paycheck, people on fixed income, right? Finding a apartment, it's, it's really difficult, so really securing, not only doing the best, but securing those people, the people that are going to be displaced, a place for them to live is really key and important. That's all that I have, thank you.
Okay, thanks. I'll go ahead and move on, anybody else wishing to, and I guess from the applicant's side, I assume we've taken notes on some of these questions while they're talking. I'll try to do the same to make sure we can address most of them in the rebuttal period here. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition, concerned, have a comment? Jim, can you shrink your, or stop, stop sharing your screen? I have, I think a chat thing from Tim Dolan. Want to say something?
Am I okay?
Yeah, is this Tim? Yeah.
Went next for quite a while, didn't know which button to push.
You're on, I just mean, could you, go ahead and state your name and address for record, if you don't mind, please?
Hi, my name's Tim Dolan, D.O.L.A.N., number eight Chaucer Road, Nashville, New Hampshire.
Thanks.
Alright, my points kind of revolve around what I would consider livability concerns. One is, I don't have the answer to all these, but just a concern, green space. There's, doesn't look like the plan really will have much green space at all. I drove by there today and looked like a couple place structures were available there. And I don't know if the new plan will have that. I'm a little confused, maybe I'm not looking at the map, at the plan correctly, is there only one sidewalk to Central Street? That's the only way pedestrian can get from either Central or they have to go around to Myrtle? And, well, you can answer that later, I assume that the fire department approved the emergency exit from, you know, the buildings, not just through the, the, the normal entrance within the parking lot.
That would come, Tim, when there's actually a building permit, so that's like a, that's another step beyond this one.
Okay.
They definitely will, but it's a little further down the road, because the building itself is not designed, yeah.
Well, the, okay, thank you, another comment had to do with the trash. I heard that there would not be a dumpster available there. I think there needs to be one, I drove by this morning, and I think I saw a couple mattresses and a couple pieces of furniture of various different types. And I don't know, maybe I didn't understand, but the residents, on trash day, the residents are to bring their trash somewhere down to the entrance, and then it's going to go away.
Yeah, we're going to have them explain that more.
Okay, and, let's see, oh, kind of the mix, you know, is there any age fifty-five living? Security access and fire exits, okay, fire exit.
Yeah, that would be the building permit, yeah.
But again, the security access to the buildings?
Yeah, we can ask about security.
And, I don't know, I mean, the, the actual numbers are good, going from forty-eight households to two hundred and some households, but I question the livability of that, you know, density.
Okay.
I think that's about all I have.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Yep.
Anybody else wishing to speak in favor, opposition, concerned, have a question? I see a hand up, was Bob Keating, but you're on mute, can you unmute? There you go, try saying something now.
Hello?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. First off, I appreciate the, a lot of effort has been put in to this project that.
Can I just get your?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, my name is Bob, Bob Keating, five Coburn Woods, on Nasher, and I'm a member of, of Granite State Organizing Project and Uterian Church. So I appreciate you the opportunity to, to speak, and I appreciate the efforts into thinking about this, and I think there's very few people who are looking at the issue of housing in this city that, that doesn't think that we need more. And so I think that that's certainly what the Housing and Redevelopment Authority is attempting to do here with us. And they're constrained, as Ms. Lombardi said, that has not been any new housing coming from the Housing Authority, and it's largely as a result of the federal regulations, and that paradoxically, in some ways, to create housing at times it means to be destroying housing, which is, again, beyond, beyond the parameters of the planning boards. But it, it is unfortunate. So those are the, I, I appreciate the efforts, but I, I do have a number of concerns and others too. Now, as we made reference already about the, you know, the density, we've moved from a place that all the families have had forty-eight units on a four-acre also, and now we're going to have, you know, two hundred and sixteen. Also, we've got, you know, four times the, the density, people have much more easy access to, to directly going outside. Now have four-story buildings if this moves forward. I'm concerned that, that with the, this is beyond the planning board, the variance is such that there are almost a hundred parking spaces less than what would have been more standard on the property of, you know, of, of this size. In the larger, in the larger sense, the concern is that to get these units, the, the families who are living there are going to suffer the most costs. Then in the very best scenario, they will be out of their neighborhood, or at least out of their, their house, they will never return to to the house, they'll be gone for, for two years. Also, for us in our community, all the people who are going to be supporting this the most, literally, are, are these forty-eight families. And that's, I think, the, I think that's the concern of everyone here, these are real families with real impacts. Many of the children are likely to be disrupted in terms of, of schools, it's unclear about where they're going to be relocated, you know, to. And if in a perfect world, and we don't live in a perfect world, that, this, this project can still, at this point in time, could have had some more efforts with, with the city to see if there was some kind of way in which they, perhaps a land swap or something like that would make a difference, would, would have made a difference, so there wouldn't be the disruption on these forty-eight, you know, families. And I think that, you know, moving forward here, I think the greatest attention of this project does get approved, needs to make sure that the minimal amount of disruption for these families is, in essence, this is an eminent domain project, in, in my view, for a, you know, for a metaphor of it, because their homes are being taken for the benefit of, of the greater good, if you will. And with that, I think there should be every effort, not only for relocation costs, but in some way that they get compensated for what they are doing for the benefit of, of the city and other residents. So that's, that's my concern, again, I think, I think that the Development Authority, Housing Redevelopment Authority is, is is making a good base effort, but I, just again, the, all the costs are being buried by these forty-eight families. That's, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Bob, appreciate it. Anybody else wishing to speak in opposition or concern or have a, a comment they want to make? And just make sure you unmute and state your name and address for the record. Okay, I'm not hearing any. So at this point, I will go back to the applicant, and maybe we can kind of take a few of these questions in order. I'm going to start with the first couple I wrote, they had to do with the target population. Any clarity, a little bit more in terms of how affordable is affordable, and what's that really mean? And, you know, a little bit about the communication with the current residents, and what, what kind of engagement has there been, you know, that kind of thing?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, my name is Jay Leonard, I'm the lawyer representing the group, can you hear me all right?
Yeah, I can hear you fine.
I may be able to answer some of these questions, as I was part of the variance process as well. So have with us, uh, Mr. Rich Mazachi, who may be able to add to what I have to say. And Mr. Tom Monahan, who was on the Board of Directors for the, uh, New Hampshire Housing Redevelopment Authority. But let me see if I can, uh, first answer some of the questions. One of the things that, um, is most exciting about this project from an affordability standpoint is that the Nashua Housing and Redevelopment Authority is going to con- continue to be in charge of the project. So the very first thing that that means is that the list that they presently have will remain in place. And that is the list of the people who will be afforded opportunities here. Right now, I think I'm right, uh, and certainly Lynn can, uh, confirm or, or modify. But I think I'm right when I say that, uh, there are thousands of people waiting for an opportunity for affordable housing in Nashua. This project is directed at those people and meeting that demand, uh, that has not been able to be met over the last few years. Uh, putting some specific numbers to, uh, uh, to some of the questions raised. Seventy, so there are ten market rates out of the two hundred sixteen, uh, units, ten are market rates. That's actually because the city of Nashua asked us, asked the developers to include a few market rates. There are two hundred six that are what we are calling affordable. Uh, affordable means that thirty-four of them will be affordable to families with eighty percent of the average median income. So, uh, and, and affordable by state law means thirty percent of your income, uh, can be used for housing and utilities. So as I say, thirty-four units will be affordable to, to families with eighty percent median income. Ninety units will be affordable to families with sixty percent of the median income. And seventy units will be affordable to families with thirty percent of the, of the median income. So these are, um, very affordable, especially in today's world. And they are directed toward the populations that I think, uh, the two spokesmen for housing advocated. With regard to, um, the green space, uh, you know, it's a fair comment. I know Mr. Rich Mazachi and the Nashua Housing and Redevelopment Authority worked very closely with, uh, the city of Nashua, the mayor's office, the planning offices, um, in determining what is the appropriate, appropriate density? And how does that balance with green space? Uh, we do have the, um, opportunity of Mines Falls Park, which offers some greens, some green space in lieu of, uh, a park on site. We were, the, the actual plan uh, is specifically designed as an urban plan. And even the parking lot is an urban type parking lot. It was, was a lot of the thought that went into onsite, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, not parking, uh, play, playfield. Uh, but I think that the comment is well taken. I think that in view of the overall goals of the project, uh, we have appropriate green space for an urban project. The only other thing I'd like to say is same kind of balancing had to happen in the density. Um, this is a site that is so important to the city of Nashua. It's, it's really the only, um, large site, four acres, uh, in the middle of, in the middle of the city. That's, that's appropriate for, uh, for housing and for dense housing. And most importantly perhaps, is that the Nashua Housing and Redevelopment Authority owns it. It's presently used for, uh, affordable housing. And, and now we can, uh, quadruple that density to, to the appropriate, um, agency. And, and someone who knows how to run facilities for the benefit of the population that, uh, has been identified. So I think that the, the points are all well taken. I want the board to know and understand how hard the Nashua Housing and Redevelopment Authority and Boston Development have been working to address those specific concerns. They will continue to work, uh, and address those concerns. Uh, but they recognize those as, as the difficult balancing that must go on for a successful project. The only other thing I would say is that, uh, as Lynn Lombardi mentioned there at the beginning of this, um, of the plans and of the, of the task of relocating. But the goal is, and it's a very, uh, Mr. Keating had many good points about the difficulties of relocation. He's actually been a part of this process as I understand it. But I know that, uh, New Hampshire Housing is very aware of those same issues and is working hard to address them. Uh, and in particular, do everything that they can to be sure that the residents don't have, um, costs pushed off on them. Uh, there's costs associated with moving. Um, they're, they're helping with the, uh, any, any school reassignments that, that occur. So there's an awful lot of organizing that's going on and that's, that's, uh, a big part of the reason that consultants and experts have been hired. So I, I think that addresses some of these specific questions. I know that, um, others in our group can talk, uh, in, in more detail if, if you'd like. Thank you.
Thanks, can, can you just, um, with regard to the affordability? How does it relate to the current forty-eight? Where, where do those fall on the scale that you were just talking about?
If, if I may, um, yeah, this is, this is Lynn Lombardi. Um, all forty-eight of those current units, um, are being replaced, obviously, on a one-for-one basis. So all bedroom sizes. Should those families choose to move back to the development, they will not pay more than what they're currently paying. That is an absolute that will occur. Um, as far as, you know, the, the, the population that we're going to serve, they're going to come from NHRA's waiting lists. Um, you know, uh, we, we have no intention of creating new waiting lists for a development. Um, we, we currently have, uh, many, many families who have been waiting, um, quite a number of years. And so we, we do intend on using those, um, those families who are currently on our application waiting lists. To answer the less than one percent vacancy rate, we absolutely are aware that this is going to be a challenge. We are going to do everything that we need to do to make the connections that are necessary to rehouse, um, these families. And we are also very sensitive to the relocation aspects of, um, taking a family from their current community and suddenly saying to them, you know, now you have to move to a new area. Those are the types of things we would, we would absolutely love to prevent from happening if there was, um, enough, uh, suitable units in a specific area to rehouse families. I also wanted to point out, and it was something that I hadn't mentioned, was with the, um, Section Eight Housing Choice vouchers that will be given to the forty-eight families, they can take these vouchers and move anywhere they want, basically nationwide. Um, they are not, um, stuck to having to relocate in the city of Nashua unless they choose to do so. And, and I believe that many families will choose to do so, but they can, they can relocate anywhere they wish. So there's a, what we call a portability aspect with the, uh, Section Eight Housing Choice vouchers that the families will be given. The, uh, the gentleman, uh, Mr. Paul Chinampa, I think his last name was. Um, he had also, uh, asked about notices to the apartments and whether or not any other, um, discussions have taken place. Uh, we did hold two, uh, Zoom, uh, video conference calls with families and invited them to, to participate. And, uh, after that, we began contacting families directly on their, on their telephones to continue the, some of these discussions, especially for those who could not attend. And then we did follow that up with the fact sheet. This is certainly not going to be the last of our meetings. They will continue. We need to continue this communication with our residents so that they're fully aware of what to expect so that, um, nobody's surprised when it, when it happens. And to begin answering some of their questions and concerns that they likely will have. The livability concerns and, and density issues, um, repeating what, uh, Mr. Mr. Petropolis just, just spoke about is that, uh, you know, this, this is urban living. There is going to be a play structure. And, um, I also want to note that there's also a playground directly across the street from, um, from the property that can be used. And, uh, crosswalks and, and safe crossing for, for the children to, to use those areas. For the trash receptacles, uh, that, that had come up, um, we're going to have actual trash rooms, um, where residents will bring their trash down to the trash room. So there will be appropriate space for some larger objects. Um, and we have a full working maintenance staff, uh, who will travel to the sites and pick up anything that the residents, um, may need to discard that don't fit into the trash rooms. Trying to think of some of the other.
There was a couple, there was a couple of, um, questions that came through on chat while you're talking trash rooms and stuff. Washer, dryer facilities and storage was, are those part of the?
Lynn, I, yeah. Yeah, so, um, I think Mr. Dolan, these questions, uh, let me start with the first one. When we were talking about the site, he was asking about bike storage and bike rack.
Yep.
We do have some bike storage planned within the larger buildings. That is the only storage we have currently designed within the buildings. But we thought it was important, um, certainly in off-seasons, not to have all of the bikes sitting outdoors in racks. We want to see storage within the buildings. Another one of his questions was in regards to elevator availability. And all four of the buildings will have elevators. So, um, that, that gives us the flexibility that if there are eight compliant units, which there will be, they can be located on any floor within any of the buildings. There's no restrictions there. Uh, and the last one I saw was in regards to washer dryers. So we are planning on having washer dryer hookups within all of the units. It's still being determined whether the appliance package is going to include that washer and dryer. Uh, but the infrastructure will be in place. And that way it's not a, a retrofit in the future if we need to change it.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Hi, uh, I'm Tom Monahan.
Go ahead, Tom.
Hi, uh, Tom Monahan, uh, live in Nashua, twenty-eighth Ward Terrace. And I've been a, uh, a Nashua Housing and Redevelopment Authority Commissioner for a way long time. You know, uh, thirty-plus years and, um, um, and, and really look for, and I am very excited about, uh, this project going forward. But a couple of numbers that I don't think got out there tonight, uh, were that, uh, and this is off our June list. Uh, we've got, uh, applicants on our, on our waiting list, and that's families, not people. Uh, for, uh, public housing, uh, three thousand one hundred and five families on that waiting list. For Section Eight persons, Section Eight vouchers, uh, on the waiting list, we have three thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine families on the waiting list. So this is a mere dent in, in, in the issue that we have within our community. But I just wanted to, for some clarity, just, uh, let the, let the listeners, uh, understand that. But, but, uh, really as a commissioner, one of five commissioners, um, I, I, I have, I, I can't impress enough upon the importance to the commissioners, uh, uh, as to, uh, uh, the residents, uh, our forty-eight families that live, uh, on Central Street. Uh, the, the displacement of them is of utmost importance. And, and I will tell you, the project will not start until that, 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 those issues are solved to, uh, to the satisfaction hopefully of all. But we are going to work our hardest for that. That is the most important thing of this, uh, as one commissioner anyways. This development will not go forward i- i- until that, uh, those, uh, those people are, uh, satisfied and, uh, have some comfort in realizing that, uh, this COVID nineteen thing doesn't help anything at all. And, and so, uh, um, you know, a, a spring start gives us some time to, to, to work through that as well. You know, so, uh, again, that, that is, uh, very important to us. And, and, uh, I, I hear what Mr. Keating, uh, uh, has said. Uh, he's a hero within our community for, uh, affordable housing and homelessness. So, uh, we, we listen to, to Mr. Keating and we plan on, uh, using him, uh, for, for, uh, his experiences and helping us, uh, through this. Thank you.
Okay, great. There was a couple other questions, uh, that I had written down that are still kind of out there. Um, one, was there any provisions or is there anything in the plans for portions of the housing or whatever to be designated for, you know, fifty-five and older or anything like that? Is any of that in the mix here? Or I know we have other housing in town that's built that way, but anybody have any comment on that?
At this time, um, the plan is to, um, have mixed population housing. And so, um, it will include age fifty-five plus, but it might not be in the same building.
Yep, okay. Um, and then there, there was a, a question about the, the concept of security. And like, uh, what's the intent of how, you know, how is security dealt with in the development? So internal, external? Anybody have any comments on that?
Well, I, I do know that in our current, um, public housing buildings, especially our largest ones, um, we use a key fob system, um, that can be turned on and turned off straight from a computer, even from my home if I wanted to. As far as, um, added security measures, um, if needed, you know, in the future, we would certainly consider putting, um, video cameras in if they were needed. Um, at this time, we're hopeful that that's not needed. It hasn't been needed at the current development as it stands. But when you begin to, um, produce housing that has interior corridor, sometimes those things can change. And we'll certainly take it as it comes and, and see what's needed. Uh, but they will all be secure locked buildings at all times. That will, um, not be a key in, you know, and will automatically close and lock behind them. And, um, you know, I, I think for right now, that's, that's how we're looking at, uh, you know, security for these, for these buildings, along with working with the local Nashville Police Department. You know, if we foresee any problems about, um, increasing patrols in those areas if necessary, um, so.
Okay, is there any onsite, um, sort of maintenance or whatever?
We do plan right now on having some office.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, none of our sites at this time have any twenty-four seven, um, security measures. Um, and, and, and it works. What we do intend on having are onsite offices where we will have staff positioned, um, and available to the residents there, uh, throughout the day and the work weeks. And, um, we're hopeful that that will, um, that will address any of their, their concerns that they might have.
Yeah, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for any of the applicants from the, the board?
Whoever.
Mr. Whoever?
Yeah, um, I, uh, a long time ago, I was, um, I worked on a project down in Boston, uh, Washington Street. And it was a major like this is, but it's not all one. And I did find that I was, uh, they had washing machines because a lot of the people in low income could not afford to have a washer dryer. And so, and they, so they had washrooms, um, on every floor that they had, uh, a war, you know, they had, I don't know how many they had, but they had it available for the residents there. I was wondering if you guys have that now or one of the proposals?
Right now, the proposal will consist of, um, potentially some, the washer dryer hookups. Um, if that doesn't pan out, then certainly we would provide some type of a laundry service, you know, laundry rooms, um, available, um, for the residents at a, at a cost, obviously. Um, we do that in our current developments right now and it works well. In, uh, some of our family developments, we just have the washer and dryer, um, hookups available to residents. Uh, so both ways really works. So both ways really works.
Good. Thanks. Other questions from the board?
I have a couple, Mr. Chair. Perhaps someone already spoke about this, but are the utilities included in the rent?
The way that, yes, the utilities will be included. The Housing Authority does intend on paying for, you know, the gas service and things like that. But what happens with low-income housing, just to provide a better understanding, is we're required to supply what's called a utility allowance. And so any utilities that are required to be paid by the residents, the residents receive then a utility allowance to assist them with that payment. So that's all a part of the low-income housing process in what we do, and that is required.
Okay, thank you. And then I guess my other question was just thinking ahead. How much time will these people have, the current residents have, to leave the place that they go to for the two years and come back? How much time will they have to be able to give a landlord notice in order to be able to, you know, move back to the new apartment?
Our hope is that we will be able to work with landlords. Certainly, we'll be working with landlords when they move there. And so we're going to, we intend on being very transparent with these landlords to explain to them that these residents may very well want to move back and make sure that they understand that, you know, at some point in the future, we would be reaching out to them. Most landlords do require the 30-day notice. We certainly don't want residents to breach their current leases. We know how that feels, and that's never a good thing. But we will work with families and work with residents. And even if a landlord is unwilling to allow a tenant to breach their lease, we'll somehow come up with a plan to make sure that they can move back and not be harmed in any way financially.
It just seems like a great opportunity, so, you know, you wouldn't want them to miss that opportunity.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Weber, I have one more.
Sure, go ahead then.
On your website, I know you guys had 30%, 40%, 60%, 80%. Is there somewhere on the website that someone that's looking at how much is actually, what's the actual cost of that? If they were in that, they would not probably know what's a medium. And so is it on your website what that would cost for the units?
It is not. And it's actually HUD sets the rents. So what they require is a maximum rent. And so when we talk about things like area median income or the AMI, and I were to say to you, you would qualify for this unit if you are at 80% or below the area median income. It's actually based on your family size. It's not just one number and one size fits all. It's based on your family size. And HUD publishes those AMI limits on an annual basis. So it's a moving target also. It changes, not drastically, but it does change. And those are readily available right on the internet. And if someone were to contact the Housing Authority, we could certainly share those numbers with them.
Yeah, I think one of the person, one of the people asked for that. That's why I ask it. Thank you.
Yeah, and I'd be happy to share it if they wanted to contact me at my office. I have those printouts for the 2020 AMI limits.
Thank you.
Okay. Other questions from the board? Hearing? At this point, I guess there's a couple of people still on the call-in. We usually have a second opportunity for the public. Anybody else in the public have any further questions or comments they want to online? Not hearing any? Okay. All right. Thank you. Then I will go ahead and I'm going to close the hearing on this matter and move to the public meeting with the board. Okay, so we've had kind of a lengthy discussion, which I think is good, on what's going on here. You know, many of us from the board have been aware of the project for some time. You know, personally, I think that the team putting the project together has really done a good job with the site. They seem to have a good process in place for helping the current residents and certainly have identified the need, probably more than I even understood. I can say that for sure. But I'm willing, I'd like to hear from the rest of the board what some of your thoughts and comments might be. Mr. Varley, I'll start with.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I mean, I know, you know, this is a discussion we've had, you know, in the context of other projects that have come before us in the last couple of years in terms of, you know, market rate apartments. And, you know, it's come to our attention in those contexts and maybe otherwise, that there is a need, you know, for affordable housing and certainly more affordable housing. And Mr. Monahan, I think, you know, really brought that into relief with the numbers he gave us. And now, obviously, this is, you know, this doesn't solve the problem, but it's certainly, I think, a step in the right direction. And I think it's a very important project. And, you know, again, understanding some of the other comments about, you know, striking the balance. I think this moves in the right direction and is an important project. And I'd certainly, you know, support this project moving forward.
Other board members?
Weber.
Mr. Weber?
Yes, as part of the Nashville Regional Planning Commission, every, almost at least once a year, and sometimes one of their major, when they have a big conference together, the major subject is housing and affordable housing and the lack of it and the necessary needs for this. And I really appreciate this, this coming before the board and how important this is not, it's good for the city, but it really helps the people that are here in the city. And there's a gigantic need for this. And so I appreciate that this is coming before us and hopefully we pass it. Thank you.
Other board member, Mr. Hudson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to know, from the engineering perspective, Joe Mandola issued comments on August 5th. And we had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Petropolis and went through his responses to those or his approach to responses. And we don't see any major hurdles that can't be overcome. I think we have a good plan to address all those. Wayne, husband, requested a contribution, traffic contribution towards Broad Street Fund. And in light of the fact that this is a, you know, a public-private partnership-type project and Nashville Housing is going to maintain ownership in the end, I think we would rescind that request for that to supporting the affordable housing to the full extent that we can. I did, we did discuss with Mr. Petropolis. I just wanted to stipulate in the approval that trash removal will be done by the owner. Public Works just doesn't have the ability to serve that long. And then the other thing was snow removal from the Headin Park on Myrtle Street would also be the responsibility owner. So two stipulations, I think, were satisfying.
Yep, okay. Anybody else from the board? Questions, comments for the meeting? Mr. Hirsch?
I think it's a good project. I think it fills a, obviously, a demand. The density of that property right now is very low in terms of number of units. So while I think there are going to be further issues down the road, we need the housing. It's critical.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would just like to remind the board that if you do decide to approve this, we did receive a revised waiver request letter today, Mr. Petropolis, of 190-193A to reduce the size of the parking width from nine feet to eight and a half.
That was 191?
193A?
Or parking width?
Right.
That would be a third waiver.
Correct.
Anybody else? All right, I entertain a motion. Does anybody want to make a motion on this package from the board? Mr. Varley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the reasons that we've discussed, I would make a motion to approve new business number eight site plan, Nashville Housing Authority owner for the redevelopment of the Bronstein Apartment Complex at 41 Central Street, finding that the site plan does meet the requirements outlined in Site Plan NRO Section 190-146D with stipulations as follows. Stipulation number one is a waiver request of NRO 190-198 regarding minimum parking. That waiver will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number two is a request for a waiver from Section 190-148D1 regarding parking aisles having not more than 10 spaces without a planted median. That waiver will read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. I'm going to add a new stipulation three that will also be a waiver request. And that will be a waiver request with respect to 190-193A for parking space width. And that waiver will also read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. The next several waivers, which would now be, I'm going to renumber, sorry, the next several stipulations. So stipulations four, five, six, seven, eight, and nine as renumbered to read as written in the staff report. With stipulation number five having a date, the email from Joe Mandola dated August 5th. And then I will add two new stipulations at the end, 10 and 11. 10 indicating that the trash removal of the property would be the responsibility of the owner, meaning that Nashville Housing Authority, not the Public Works Department. And similarly, the stipulation number 11 indicate the plowing of the spaces on, the head-in spaces of Myrtle Street would similarly be responsibility of the owner of the Nashville Housing Authority.
Okay, so we have that motion to approve as indicated by Mr. Varley with the 11 stipulations as stated and the three approved waivers. Do we have a second on that?
Weber?
Second.
Second by Mr. Weber. Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, can I get a roll vote, Linda?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Varley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Yes.
Maggie Carper?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Appreciate the presentation and for the project.
One thing.
Thank you.
Mr. Weber?
Yes, one thing for Jim. Hey, Jim, I hope that club is working good. I'm sorry, it wasn't my fault. It wasn't, it was, I couldn't get that for three weeks, honest to God. Sorry about that.
It's not a problem.
Thanks. I'm going to move on to our other business agenda now. Other business number one, the review of tentative agenda. We don't have a tentative agenda at this point to look at in our packet, so we're going to move on from that. Other business number two, this is for the planning board for us to, a reappointment to the Capital Improvement Committee for a two-year term to expire August 1st, 2022. The two folks that are up for reappointment are Larry Setzler and Robert Kinnaway. So both of those folks have indicated their interest, right, Linda, to remain on the Capital Improvements Committee? And for those of you who are not necessarily familiar with the committee, it's like, it's a committee of the planning board that we went through and sort of rack and stack the capital improvement projects that are being proposed by the city departments. And it's just a recommendation that goes to the alderman. So I guess what we'd be looking for, and I would recommend, I've worked with both of these folks on the Capital Improvement Committee for a couple of years now. So I would recommend that they're, they be reappointed. But I'd be welcome on a motion from anybody on it.
Weber?
Mr. Weber?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion in a positive to reappoint the two candidates. If I try to pronounce your name.
Larry and Robert, how about that?
Larry and Robert. I thank them for their hard work and to continue.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Weber to reappoint for a two-year term, beginning to expire August 1st, 2022. Larry Setzler and Robert Kinnaway. I guess it is.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Varley. Any further discussion? Can we get a roll vote on that?
Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Varley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
I'm going to abstain because I don't want these gentlemen to feel they owe me any projects.
And Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion passes.
Okay, so moving on. I guess, Linda, you'll inform them?
I will.
So we have one discussion item on our agenda here. It has to do with Merritt Place Apartments, Main Dunstable Road, Merritt Parkway. Do you have someone who wants to talk on that or is?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. Good evening, everybody. My name is Paul Chisholm, and I'm a professional engineer with Keach Norsham Associates. For the record, we're located at 10 Commerce Park North, Suite 3 in Bedford, New Hampshire. And I'm going to kind of introduce everything. But before I do that, put a copy kind of of our plan up and share it if that's all right with you all.
Sure.
So it's up on my screen. Can you all see that?
Not yet.
Okay, let's see.
There you go.
Okay.
You got me up there, actually.
Yeah. Now I think we got it, yeah. Okay, so really, tonight, we're here to have a conceptual discussion with you folks regarding a proposed 160-unit apartment building located in the Maplewood condominium development and get your feedback before moving forward with any detailed design, before moving forward with any of the various permitting processes that would have to take place for a project of this nature. And so that's really our goal here tonight is to get feedback from you all. I was approached by Rob Parsons and his team. They had attended a developmental conference that was held by the mayor and economic development staff here in the city. And at that meeting, basically, there was a call for additional housing in the city. I think it's been pretty well documented, not only here tonight, but certainly in recent times in Nashville, that vacancies are at a very low rate. Rents have climbed, you know, a lot recently. And so there's certainly a need for all different types of housing. And even just sitting through the agenda tonight and listening to all the different applications, it seems that there is a multitude of different types of housing moving forward, which is great to see. In particular, what Rob informed me of is some discussion that one of the things that they were looking for is kind of a mid-scale development. You know, not like a 40-unit or less, not a 500-unit or more, but something certainly more. I think this kind of hits the sweet spot in terms of the number of units that they were looking for. Um, and, and certainly, uh, that, you know, that kind of density, but also, uh, not, not in an elderly fashion, just, um, regular, you know, uh, apartment units, if you will. Um, and so taking that information back, uh, Rob and his team, uh, kind of went looking for a good place to put something like that. And they identified this parcel, um, which, uh, is, is actually a very interesting piece. So this is, uh, it's the last undeveloped parcel. It's unit eight in the, in the Maplewood condominium development. And I also believe it's the, uh, last undeveloped piece in the entirety of the flexible use overlay district. Uh, the Maplewood site itself is situated in the southwest corner of town, um, in between Conant, Buckmeadow, and Main Dunstable. Uh, the condo today, uh, you know, the other, the other, uh, units around this, uh, or the other, uh, businesses, uh, around this site are a good mix of commercial office and retail. Beyond the parcel, but within that flexible use overlay district, it's really, uh, all residential. So it's all a bunch of, um, residential streets, uh, different types of residential developments and, and things of that nature. Um, the conceptual site plan that we have up on the screen here shows, uh, what we call kind of like a single, uh, a one, uh, boomerang-style building. It has a hundred and sixty units and what we're proposing is four stories. Along with that, um, you can see the outskirts of, of this particular condo unit within the development is outlined by that, that, um, agenda line. Uh, we're showing a hundred and sixty parking spaces specifically in there, but certainly we have room, room to grow. Uh, if we kind of took over more of that green space we're showing around, um, the proposed improvements here. Um, however, we do believe that there's some synergy, uh, in terms of shared parking and things like that, given the different styles of users that are located on the property. Uh, that's certainly something we're going to look at a lot closer once we get into detailed design and kind of come up with, um, you know, whatever it is we think that magic number might be, just so we're not, uh, adding in unnecessary additional impervious area. Um, I know one of the goals of the flexible use overlay district is to maintain a, a good amount of open space, so, uh, trying to maintain in with that. Along with, uh, the parking and, and the building improvement here, we will obviously have a detailed proposal at some point in time that covers the landscaping, the lighting, uh, all the stormwater management improvements that are necessary, um, for not only the city of Nashua, but, uh, this particular site would trigger, uh, and go over the thresholds, uh, for the NHDES alteration of terrain program. So there would be some pretty stringent regulations associated with all of those items as well. Um, and I, I also would like to note, um, that this, this very much is a conceptual plan. Uh, a lot of what you could see here could change. I mean, we're talking, um, in terms of the size of the building, the shape of the building, if it's just one building, um, the layout of the parking, all of those things are certainly, um, things that, you know, are not set in stone. We have a lot of conversations to have with a lot of different people, uh, and have to flush out a lot of, a lot of items. And, and all of that will kind of weigh into whatever the final design ends up being. So, um, this is kind of what we're looking at from an ideal perspective from, uh, Rob and his team's end. But, you know, again, just keep in mind that this certainly has the ability to change. Part of the reason of that is, uh, this project will require a use variance. Multi-family is not specifically allowed in the flexible use overlay zone. Uh, but what's interesting is elderly development is, so you could have a pretty similar, um, development here, I guess, with elderly. But again, going back to, um, that, that can, the, the development, um, you know, conference that they had with the mayor and the, uh, development team there in the city, uh, that was certainly something that, um, they said they weren't really interested in. They were more interested in a typical, uh, multi-family type, uh, development. So, um, anyway, we're going to have that discussion with the ZBA. Uh, we're scheduled to have that on Tuesday, and we'll see how that plays out. Um, but, um, uh, anyway, that's, that's forthcoming here pretty quickly. So, uh, in addition to the conceptual plans, we also had GPI prepare kind of an initial traffic memo to get an understanding of any impacts on that end. Uh, we had Mark Fugere, uh, prepare an initial school study memo to kind of see, all right, what, what does this mean in terms of, uh, how does this impact schools and specifically how many school-aged children would be kind of introduced into the system with something like that? Um, I know these are definitely concerns that, uh, we've heard not only tonight, but, uh, again, in recent times in Nashville as well. So, uh, looking at those studies, um, yeah, basically the, the traffic would, would be incrementally increased. Um, it was to, you know, they concluded in their letter, uh, which is something, certainly something we'd be happy to provide it at any point, um, that, that no significant impact would be, uh, as a result of this development. What was interesting and, and jumped off the page at me was that, uh, the city does have a traffic impact report, um, that goes along with every site plan application, and there's certain thresholds for, um, you know, daily traffic, number of peak hour trips and things like that. And this is walking the line on whether or not a, a full-on traffic study would even be required. So, um, once we get a little bit more honed in with the program, we'll be able to finalize those numbers. Uh, the school, uh, memo that Mark Fugere prepared, uh, also had a little bit of, uh, what I, was surprising information to me, but, um, what I've heard, uh, kind of anecdotally, um, mirrors some things that I've seen in similar studies that, um, uh, you know, this type of development, uh, he looked at it as if it were all two bedrooms. Um, I think that may be the thought at the moment, but certainly, uh, a mix of two and one bedrooms could, could be into play here. Um, but anyway, he, he came up with, um, numbers of about nine or ten students, um, that would be entering the school system, school-age kids, um, from a development like this, a hundred and sixty two-bedroom units. So that's what he looked at specifically. Um, uh, among that, most of those would be in elementary school age. That is a population throughout the city that has decreased. I think it was a little over ten percent in the last five or six years. So, um, certainly, I, we believe that there's some cas- capacity there to handle, uh, the, the minor increase of nine or ten students. Lastly, I, I want to talk a little bit about the flexible use overlay district in which this parcel and this project is located. Um, within there, it does state that, uh, a total square footage per building is limited to about ten thousand square feet. And for the whole mixed-use village, which is this Maplewood condominium development, to about eighty thousand square feet. However, it does provide, um, the planning board with a lot of flexibility in terms of what is dimensionally allowed. And, um, you know, what could be, obviously, the, the code itself, uh, I guess, you know, could be, whatever the restrictions are, those, those could be changed by the planning board. Um, so it wouldn't need a waiver or variance. It's just kind of written into the code that way. Um, now, the code itself was, was written decades ago, and, um, obviously, uh, this being the last really developable piece within that zone, has, you know, you can kind of see how the rest of the area has, uh, unfolded over time. Uh, this particular parcel has been, uh, left behind in some senses. I know there have been some previous proposals in years past. Nothing's ever come to fruition. Um, and again, this is part of the reason why Rob identified this, that Rob and his team identified this piece, uh, for this type of project. Um, you know, they certainly feel that allowing, um, uh, with the planning board being allowed to have the flexibility to vary from those dimensional restrictions, um, it would essentially modernize, it would allow you folks to be able to modernize, um, that ordinance in a way that would create kind of a good transitional use here between the commercial components of the flexible overlay district and the residential components, uh, in, in that sense. So, um, I, I believe Rob's on the call. Rob, I don't know if you have anything to add to that, but, um, I'll turn it over to him. And if, if he, um, doesn't have anything, of course, um, like I said, we're really here for feedback from you folks. Um, you know, what jumps off the page at you? What do you, do you like? What don't you like? That's the type of feedback we're looking for, um, and we're certainly are going to take any and all feedback under consideration moving forward. So, uh, Rob, Rob, if you're on and you'd like to say something, uh, please, please go ahead. Okay, well, uh, that, and without being the case, uh, Mr. Chairman, I can, uh.
There aren't too many other people on. Okay, um, so I'll start. My first impression is it's a monster building in the area. You know? Yeah, it looks like a hotel to me, not a housing development, so. And it's in the middle of a bunch of single-family homes. So I would expect a lot of pushback, you know? You know, I agree with the housing, um, being needed, but most of the housing we see, you know, tends to be in development, so multi-building, you know, lower, you know, two-story, split up into like a campus kind of arrangement, right? So I'm thinking, as you go down Spitbrook, right, and we've got the new housing that's up on Fire Hill. We get the housing that's sort of on the left as you go up, um, go up Spitbrook. You know, they're, they're kind of smaller-scale buildings in sort of, uh, campus style. That, to me, seems more appropriate for this kind of area than a one large giant block of facility. And I'm not even sure there's a, I don't even know where the next four-story building is from that. It's probably in Spitbrook, right?
Okay.
Down by like, it's like, like I'm envisioning, it's, looks like the Radisson out there.
Sure.
I mean, I don't know what the square foot of the Radisson is, but it's probably about half that size, right? But, so that's just my first impression is that this, this, the massing of the thing is odd for the site.
Okay. That's certainly something we can, we can look at and, uh, you know, talk about as a team, and, um, we will definitely take that under consideration.
Uh, other people? Ms. Harper?
Um, I do like the idea of, of having this type of housing in that particular spot because there are, you know, restaurants and doctor's offices and what have you. And I do kind of like that model of a mini-community within our community, but I would definitely agree with, um, the chair that it would need to be in keeping with the, you know, the area around it.
Mr. Barley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, yeah, I would just, I, I would reiterate that, that point in terms of the sort of the fitting. And, you know, again, a- as Mr. Claire indicated, I mean, particularly where this building is positioned, it, it butts essentially directly against, um, a, a neighborhood of single-family homes. Um, so I think, you know, breaking it down a little bit, um, so it's a little bit more consistent with the type of buildings in, in the surrounding neighborhoods would make sense. I, I guess this is, this is more a, a question, and it's, it's, I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other, but, but given the nature of the, the various uses as you've described within the existing condo complex, I'm, I'm wondering whether you've considered, you know, whether this would be purely residential here or whether you would sort of communicate, um, incorporate, you know, any sort of retail or, or other, you know, commercial uses within this development, sort of getting back to sort of the idea of the, of it being sort of the, a mixed use. And then, I, I, you know, I, and I agree with the, the sort of the, the initial assessment it sounds like you made in terms of traffic impact, you know, specifically in terms of the surrounding, or whether it's Conant Road or Main Dunstable or Buckmeadow. Um, it, it seems to me, you've given the number of, you know, housing units that are in this area generally, I, it, it doesn't seem like it would have a significant impact on traffic. However, I would note that, that Merritt Parkway, uh, I'm not sure what the width is, but it's a private road, and it's pretty narrow. And, and it doesn't get a lot of traffic right now. I mean, it's basically, you know, it's through traffic that people are going to the, a couple of restaurants there or stopping at Captain's Corner of the gas station. And, and so I guess I would ask you to, to think about what the impact is specifically there. You know, in terms, you, whether that road is now is, is sort of, you know, suitable for handling, um, you know, the level of sort of additional internal traffic within the site there.
Sure. Um, i- in, and if I can just jump in there, um, I, speaking to the retail, um, component in question you talked about, uh, that is actually something that I, I had suggested to Rob and his team as well. Um, you know, maybe having like a first-floor retail with some residential on, above that, um, which is kind of a newer age development that you, you're starting to see, uh, more of. Their thought is that, you know, this is, this is really, can, they consider more of a transitional piece, and they already have that retail and that mixed use built into those sites that are already within the property itself. So, um, they are looking at really more of a, a, a strict residential, um, development for this unit, basically just for that reason. Uh, they just feel that it's, it's there. They don't know how much more that can be supported, um, by any new residential that they're bringing in or the, the residential that's already developed around it. So, um, that's a concern that they had, and it is a thought that they, that they did look into, so.
Right, and, and I would say, I mean, yeah, the, the reason I raise it, I mean, I, I, I live, you know, as, as do some of the other board members, you know, in this vicinity, I'm, you know, just down the road. Um, and, you know, I, I think, I think you, this area could support additional retail or, you know, if it was a restaurant or something like that.
Sure.
I, I think there's, you know, there's more, there'd be more than sufficient demand. You know, understanding again that, I mean, obviously, the developers ultimately need to decide, you know, what they think the best use is. But, but again, just a thought, I, I, I do think, um, I do think the opportunity is there, um, you know, gi- given the, the, you know, the, the, this sort of density of, of, you know, existing residences around the area.
Sure. Uh, Mr. Chairman, if, if I can, I did just get a text message from Rob. Um, he is on the call. It says he's, uh, says he's muted. He's trying to chime in just to join in on the conversation. So I don't, I don't know, uh, there's a way to maybe, I don't know who he is on here, but, um, if there's a way to maybe get him unmuted.
I think everybody is unmuted, right, for the most part right now?
It sounds, it sounds like it was just unmuted.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can.
Yep. Great. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate the comments and the consideration. This, with respect to the, uh, the height and the size of the structure, I heard it has some comments about the nearest building of this size being Tara Heights. I mean, I'm sorry, not Tara Heights, but the, uh, actually the Radisson. I actually live in Sky Meadow. I'm a lifelong resident in Nashua. Uh, I live in Sky Meadow, and I'm in, on a street that is houses. But, uh, Sky Meadow is, um, you know, fairly well-known community. It's been there since nineteen eighty-six. I look out at a seven-story building, um, that is, there's two of them in Sky Meadow. There are towers that are larger, uh, housing, and then there's, uh, three, four-story buildings that are the size of this project. Uh, and then, of course, there's, uh, townhouses and then single-family homes. And arguably, some of the more valuable real estate in Nashua would be in that development. Uh, I don't think it's been impacted by the fact that there's seven-story buildings in there. And I think per square foot, those represent some of the higher-value per-square-foot properties in town. Um, I don't think that I've been diminished in my single-family home by having the view of a, of a high-rise, um, or the mid-rise or any of the multi-family. And I thought of that in consideration of this project. I mean, I've ridden my bike on there since I was seven years old. Uh, and I, I'm thinking about this neighborhood as being the commercial zone. You have the Cherrywood District, and then this is kind of a transitional area. With respect to the retail being on the first floor, Paul did suggest that to me, and I thought that would be kind of unfair to the, you know, you've already got a commercial bank of tenants that, quite frankly, haven't, have struggled in the sense that there hasn't been the traffic to this market. I've never seen a Dunkin' Donuts closed in my life, but I watched one open and then close at this intersection because it doesn't have the traffic or vibe to support a Dunkin' Donuts, which is hard pressed to think about in, in New England, to think about a Dunkin' closing. So I didn't really want to add more retail to challenge those tenants that already, you know, that, that will be rejuvenated by the, uh, actual, uh, presence of the residential component. And I think overall, if you look at the infrastructure of what's been built there, uh, it's been built to accommodate far more than what's been developed. Uh, and this hasn't really ripened in all the years that it's been there, uh, and I think this will help bring it to fruition. And it does serve as a good transition from true commercial to single-family residential. Have this project, uh, be, it is a great transitional project. It, it goes from retail and commercial, single-family residential, to have this as a residential component with families living and, you know, shopping and just, I, I think it's a great transitional project. But I'll leave it with that.
Okay, thanks, Rob. Other folks? Mr. Weber?
Yes. Recently, um, a couple of years ago, we had a very large, long, tall building in a residential. Won't speak of it, but it was soundly rejected by the, uh, the neighbors that were in the area. They did not like the appearance of it, and, and so something else came up about it. But that was there, and yours is a different place. Uh, what I would recommend, it's great to come before the board, but, uh, your challenge will be your neighbors. And I would recommend, uh, seeking out the neighborhood to see what they think of it also. Because if they don't like it, they're going to be soundly against it. And so I would recommend that, you know, maybe you take this before your neighbors to see. And so, I would recommend that, you know, maybe you take this before your neighbors to see, you know, if there's, if, how they feel about it so that when time comes, it comes before the board. My own thought is that, uh, a big, long building like this is, um, is, may not really be acceptable to the area. But that's now, that doesn't mean that's what it can be with the other board members. Um, so, that's my advice. Thank you.
Ms. Harper?
Uh, the only other thing I, I did want to say about the idea of having mixed use, which I, I do like, is that, um, you know, ti- times have changed and a lot of people already are moving away from really metropolis areas like Boston and are looking for a place to live in areas like Nashua that are going to be working from home. So, having, you know, mixed use and, and services readily available near where they live is, I think it's going to be, become a more attractive living situation than previously.
Okay. Mr. Hirsch?
Um, just, I think the reality is that retail is not going to do well in that area. Uh, retail's changing quickly right now. Uh, you're seeing a lot of the small independent operators can't make it. They're coalescing into larger, more efficient units. I, I just don't see it potentially at all for a successful retail component. I also feel that it denigrates or it brings down the quality of the residential properties above. If you have retail on the first floor, for example, we're not in a downtown situation. Uh, so out in some, in that kind of suburban rural environment, I, I just don't see it, it being a successful combination. I, I think the project is too large, from what I can tell, but I don't think bringing retail until it'll help you at all.
Hmm. Okay. Anybody else?
Uh, yeah, I've got something.
Yeah, Mr. Peterson?
Um, well, I have a couple of first, a couple of first impressions of this project. And one is, uh, the paperwork that's provided to me calls it one hundred and sixty apartments, which means they're rentals, not condos. And would these be market rate? Or, uh, would there be a, a, a scale depending on people's income? Then the other thing, uh, that they started off by saying with the traffic report, there would be no appreciable traffic. When I pull up in an intersection of like Buck Meadow, Gilson and Main Dunstable Road, you better keep your wits about you. That's a tricky intersection. And then to add a hundred and sixty more apartments, not just individuals, but apartments with maybe two cars per each, there's no way that there'd be a negligible traffic impact. It, it would definitely be a lot more busier out there in my amateur opinion. So, I wouldn't just take this, this, uh, paperwork that received face value that there'd be no, uh, serious traffic impact. And I think the residents in that neighborhood, uh, they'd be even more concerned than I am about the way it would affect their neighborhood. So, that is my impression of it. And, uh, so my question is, i- is this market rate housing? Or is there a, a, a scale of the cost to live there as a, as a renter?
Rob, you want to, you want to answer that one?
Yeah, sure. Certainly. This is, this is market rate housing. Uh, and this is, yeah, and as far as, uh, that you're speaking to the traffic reports, we've done traffic reports, uh, and they, they do show negligible and it's not, uh, something that was just commissioned, uh, off the feet of our pants. I mean, this is professionally commissioned studies, uh, and it does show negligible. Uh, it's a hundred and sixty units, even with three hundred and twenty cars or whatnot per day. Uh, it doesn't add a tremendous amount to that area. And as I said, th- this is, uh, this was built, the infrastructure that's built around this has been built to accommodate far more than what's currently been developed there. Um, but yes, it is market rate. Um, a- and as far as, if I could speak to the one-unit building, the reason we did the one larger building instead of a series of small buildings is that the series of small buildings don't really give you the economy of scale to be able to have any communal space. Uh, and we opted for the larger building so that we could use the economy of scale to be able to have people, uh, to, to be able to have a communal space to have, um, like, for example, parking garages for bikes, um, you know, have a, so people could store their bikes inside because there's a lot of walking trails, biking trails in this area that are very underutilized. Uh, and then, you know, people could enjoy that, be able to bring their bike inside, wash it, clean it, hang it and, and, and store it. And then also, it's a great location to have pets. And we would like to have, you know, some of the, some of, we looked at some of the suburban projects and outside of Boston that are very successful today. And what people really look for is that communal space and they want, uh, you know, pet washing stations, uh, so that we could use, the larger building gives us the economic scale to be able to incorporate that into the structure so that they can have the bike garages and the pet stations and, and be able to, you know, have some communal space and be a part of the community. Uh, that's why we didn't do the separate buildings. Like, if you look at the Terra Heights, which is a nice development, but they're all separated buildings and people walk in, they grab their mail, they hit the elevator and they go home. Um, there isn't really a sense of community unless they all for, you know, collaborate at a central detached, uh, kind of, uh, clubhouse, which they typically don't do. Uh, so this is why we did it in one building because it gives us more of a sense of community. And realistically, there's a lot of amenities in this that are already there by way of, um, you know, the pizza shops and the Chinese restaurant and the, you know, the, the, there's a daycare. So, I mean, the, a doctor's office, there's a pet, uh, doctor, um, a dentist. I mean, there's a real little sense of community in there and that's what we were trying to build upon. But if you think that separating them into a multitude of smaller buildings, um, we'd be open to listening to that, but I wanted you to understand the concept of what we were thinking when we did the larger building. It wasn't to create a monolithic building. It was quite the opposite. It was more to create a sense of community amongst the people that, that live in there. If you understand the vision.
Sure. Yeah, we appreciate you're talking through that. Yeah. Other comments, questions?
Um, I guess, one, one question I have, Mr. Chairman, is just, um, you know, I'm getting the sense that, um, a lot of the board members don't particularly like the idea of one bigger building. Um, I, I don't know how, if, and, you know, Rob's last statements there and what his vision was changes anybody's mind on that matter. Um, so that's one question I would ask. And then, um, just in general, I mean, knowing the area, knowing this is kind of the last piece out there for that, um, I, I think I kind of heard that, um, it, the apartment use in general, uh, there, it doesn't seem to be any opposition from, from you folks to, to have that sort of thing. I know that's really more of a zoning matter, but, um, I think it just helps to kind of have an understanding of, um, if you're, you know, what your thoughts are on that specifically. Um, and so I would just pose those two kind of additional questions if, if you don't mind.
Yeah, sure. I mean, my, um, my thought on the communal spaces, it's kind of, it's still kind of mixed. I think if you develop the right campus environment, if you will, you get some of that, you know, so. Um, and, you know, that might mean you need some connecting spaces between the building that multiple people use, you know, whether that's combining walking trails and, you know, sort of park areas or whatever, whatever kind of things like that. So, I think you can accomplish that at a campus level than a, you know, versus a sort of totally enclosed kind of place, you know? So, I think there's, I think there's other solutions to that. Um, and then the apartment versus co- condo, I don't know if I have super feedback on that. I mean, it's, it's odd that it's apartment in that area because it's mostly condo in that whole end of the city. So, it's just, it, it's definitely, you know, you think of like Westgate and all those. I mean, they're all condos, right? That's all condo stuff. So, um, I'm not sure what drives that decision. It just seems a little out of character still for the area, but, you know. Oh, I welcome anybody else. Mr. Barley?
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess I would say, I mean, I, I don't, I, I mean, I don't disagree with Scott. I mean, it is, there are not a lot of apartments in that area, but I, I mean, I will say, myself personally, I don't have a strong feeling. I mean, I, I, you know, in the, in the sense that I, I, I certainly wouldn't. I don't think it's, you know, objectionable or, you know, or, or concerning that it would be apartments and not condos. I mean, and I understand that, you know, the, the need, the probably the housing need i- i- that's, that's, you know, out there right now is greater probably for rentals than it is for, you know, ownership. So, I can understand why you would, um, focus on apartments a- and, and not on condos. And, and then, you know, getting back to the, the issue of the, you have the single large building versus the, you know, several smaller buildings. Um, y- you know, I, I do think, I, I agree with Scott in terms of the ability to be able to have, you know, usable and, and invaluable community space, even if you have multiple buildings. And, you know, I think the other thing is, is talked about, there, there being sort of an existing sort of community element, given the nature of, of the kind of development now. And to some degree, in my view, that, that sort of takes away from the need to have a single building with a single sort of point, uh, you know, community point that's, you know, that's common to everyone, given that you have, you know, other uses that are, are, you know, close by in terms of the doctor's office and the daycare and the, the restaurants and so forth. Um, you know, i- it, it's not as if this, this building would be sort of out by itself where you might want to say, well, we really want to focus on trying to congregate people in this, you know, single location. Um, so to me, that sort of argues in favor of saying, yeah, we, we don't necessarily need to have, um, you know, the one, one community point here.
Yeah, the other comment I might have is like the uncovered parking is a little odd there too. Right? So, a lot of the other developments around there have, do have some portions of covered parking, you know, whether it's, you know, just something to consider, you know?
I think that's actually a very good comment. And there is, uh, there is, there's, if you look at the way the shape of the building is now, uh, the, the abandoned house that's kind of half-built, the farmhouse with the porch. Uh, we have an opportunity on that side to do covered, uh, parking, uh, that would be available because there's a, there's a large strip of land there that's not, we, we have a lot of, um, um.
Right. Yeah, I'm, I'm sure you're aware and I'm sure Paul is, that, you know, that's, um, there's a ton of ledge there in that whole site. You can see it sticking right out of the ground, right? So, so that's going to be a little bit of a constructability challenge that I'm sure you're going to get questions about how are you going to get the foundations and out there without, you know, um, rocking a few other local foundations. So, just be ready for that. Because, you know, a lot of maple wood is blasting, so.
Weber?
Go ahead, Mr. Weber.
Um, uh, there's a, may not be, but there's, I believe there's a hiking trail in that area, um, that goes out in the back of where you're at. Is this being affected?
Hmm. I think, I think, uh, in talking with Rob, it's one of the benefits of, of having a, a, a use like what he's talking about proposing here is actually being able to kind of tie into that and make that work with the proposed development and seeing it as almost like a selling feature for the development. So, um, it's something I think, especially in today's world, um, you know, people are getting out and enjoying those things a, a lot more. So, um, I think they see that as a benefit and something they'd probably want to preserve.
Okay, because there is a hiking trail that I'm pretty sure that it comes out, uh, from that parking lot over by Dunkin', the Dunkin' Donuts and there's, uh,
Yeah, there's a trail. It go, it goes through, it goes through Maplewood.
Yeah, yeah.
But ba- based on, I mean, obviously the, the plan's not up right now, but it didn't look like this would, would impact that.
Okay, great.
Yeah. And certainly that's something that could potentially be enhanced by this plan as well. Um, you know, again, I, I don't know exactly where that is, um, so I, I just want to make that known, but, um, it's something we can definitely take a look at.
May I say one more thing?
Sure, go ahead, Mike.
Um, wh- when I drive out that way to, uh, buy Chinese food or whatever, I'd often say to myself, why do they name this parking lot a Parkway? I mean, you feel like you're driving through a parking lot when you're on so-called Merritt Parkway? Uh, no way can I see a hundred and sixty apartments going in that won't seriously impact what it's like to drive out in that neighborhood. And if we're going to get a traffic report, I think we need one that's objective, not one that's paid for by the builder. Because, uh, a hundred and sixty apartments going in and there's no negligible, no noticeable impact was, uh, I find that hard to believe. And, um, that so-called Merritt Parkway will be a clogged-up parking lot, uh, when the hundred and sixty apartments go in, in my opinion. And I would think if you ask the people in that neighborhood, they'd have a similar, uh, observation. Thank you.
Good. Sure. And, and if I could just describe, uh, the study that we did do, it's, it's not a full-on traffic study. It's, it was an initial study to kind of give us a sense of what we're dealing with. Um, then the impact numbers are really based on the volume and capacity of the road. And then looking at this development, how would people kind of drive, um, in and out of the development? Which ways are they going? That kind of thing. So, there's certainly more that can be done there. I don't want you to think that it's, um, you know, i- i- it was done to the scale of where we're at in the process right now. So, there is more that can be done there. Uh, and absolutely, I think it's something that we could, we could do. Um, you know, moving forward, should we come back to you with a, with a full plan?
Right.
Probably bring that, uh, up to the next level as well.
Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to note that the, the firm that they hired to do that is a reputable firm and, uh, volumes that they projected, I think are similar to the, the other development that we approved earlier tonight. So, I don't envision traffic would be a huge issue with that development, but it's something that we would need to look at going forward. Uh, other than that, I agree with all the other comments about the scale of the building and those things. I mean, it's, it's got to fit. It's going to be accepted by the area. It's a tough spot. I don't really know what would work well there. Uh, seems like residential is a logical thing, so, um, so that's, yeah, that's what I have to offer, I guess.
Great. All right. Any other, uh, comments by the board? Like, I got some feedback again.
Yes, absolutely. I, I do appreciate. I know it's getting late. Thank you for staying up and, and hearing us. And, uh, we do get feedback and, uh, we will absolutely take these, uh, comments, concerns, uh, everything under consideration, uh, moving forward. So, so thank you very, very, very much.
Yeah, thanks for coming. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
All right. Okay, that's it. Uh, any other discussion items from the board?
Weber?
Yeah.
Uh, we did get, I did get the, uh, traffic report for the, uh, Hudson thing. And it's, uh, what I see is it's, it's not really changed anything as far as traffic. Uh, I want to go talk to the National Regional Planning Commission, Jay over there, and kind of discuss with him. But I just wanted to let you guys know, there's another traffic report came out, but nothing much.
Okay, thanks. Anything else? All right. I would definitely take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right. So, your motion by Mr. Weber to adjourn, uh, I'll get a roll vote on that. We don't need a second on it.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
And Weber?
Yes.
James Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes seven to zero.
All right, we are adjourned eleven twenty-nine.
Yeah.